All right, we are all here. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of May 10th, our third meeting in person, so it's good to see, it's good to see people again. I would like to call the meeting to order. And we'll start with a roll call by staff.
Commissioner DeFever?
Here.
Commissioner Amir?
Here.
And Chair Williams?
Here.
All present.
Thank you.
We have Commissioners Si and Commissioner Woodward are absent tonight.
Thank you. We'll, we'll miss them, of course. So before we turn to the noticed agenda items for the evening, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to any matter that does not appear on tonight's agenda? I assume, it looks like everyone is here for a noticed item, so I'll let the record reflect that there is no one who wishes to speak to an unnoticed item. Okay, we'll turn to a staff briefing if there are any updates for us generally.
There are none.
Okay, thank you. Well, I know we have no minutes this evening to review, so we'll take that up at the next Planning Commission meeting. We do have an action item scheduled for tonight, and that is the Planning Commission regular meeting time. This was actually before us at the last meeting, and I know staff was working to get a resolution prepared, which we now have before us, if you wanted to give an update.
That is correct. If you'd like a short presentation, I can. If not, the Planning Commission can just take that up to consider what they want as their regular time for the future or for the remaining meetings. And the regular meeting that we were asking for the permanently to change to, or that is part of the resolution, let me see if I can speak tonight, is 6:30 PM, which is currently what you're doing with your special meetings.
Right, right.
And, you know, part of the importance here is that we keep advertising as a special meeting because we haven't made that official change from what we had from the COVID period of time to now when we're in open meetings.
Exactly, exactly. So prior to the pandemic, we were meeting regularly, regularly at 7:30 PM, and we changed that to 6:30 PM in response to the, some executive orders by the governor, I believe.
Yes.
And we, I think we all enjoy this time, and at the last meeting, I know Commissioners Si, Commissioner Woodward were here, and they also articulated on the record that they prefer the 6:30 time as well. So I, I think the action before us is just adoption of the resolution, setting the regular meeting time to 6:30 in place here.
You need to make a public comment on that before you make a motion.
Thank you so much. So this is an action item requiring public comment.
It is an action item. It does require public comment, so you'll make that before you move for a resolution adoption.
Excellent. Okay, so I'm going to open this up for a public hearing, to the extent there's anyone in the audience who has anything to say about the Planning Commission meeting time. There is. We'll have to talk to the warriors about their schedule. So I don't see anyone who would like to speak, so I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for deliberation. I think we have already.
Yeah, I think, I think we've talked about this before, maybe at two prior meetings even, and just haven't voted on it yet. And I did look at the resolution. I don't see any language problems in the resolution. I would move that we adopt the 6:30 time.
I second.
Right, all in favor? Aye. And motion carries. So we'll see you next time at 6:30. All right, so let's turn to the public hearing item, and there's only one tonight, and that is consideration of the town's general plan 2040 and the related environmental impact report. And I will invite staff to give their report and presentation.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners and the public. It's nice to see everybody here tonight. And what we are, what we are doing tonight is having a public hearing to discuss the adoption of a resolution recommending to Town Council, the certification of the environmental impact report, statement of overriding considerations, and a mitigation monitoring report, as well as adoption of a resolution recommending the adoption of the general plan 2040. So I think it's important to first talk about, I don't know how much everybody knows, but I know we have been working on this for some time, but everyone here probably hasn't. So I think I'm going to delve into some details first, and then, of course, the commission will have time to ask and the public will have time to comment afterwards. So what are we doing? Right now, we're updating our general plan. The last update was in 2005. And the government code requires that each jurisdiction adopt and maintain a general plan. And typically, cities adopt, update, excuse me, the general plan every 20 years. So the town started this initiation process and began in the fall of 2020 when we hired O'Rourke and Associates. And I should take a moment and introduce who I have here, because without them, I could not have done this process. So I have Christine O'Rourke, who is the principal of O'Rourke and Associates. And then I have Christina Erwin, who is, I don't know what your title is, but she is my right-hand person with respect to all environmental, and she works for De novo and Associates, a planning group. And then to my left, I also have our Assistant Town Attorney, Mary Wagner. And also, because I can't forget the person who keeps me in line all the time, Kristi Fong, my senior planner. So with that, I'm going to move forward, but you should know, we, we can't do this alone. We did this as a team. So as I said, this has been a process where the Planning Commission and the public have been engaged since September 2020. And in November and December, we went forward and had stakeholder interviews. We launched our website. We put together a town mailer, and we had our first survey that we posted on our website. And then between March 2021 and April 2023, we had eight different workshops that were held. I will note that it was an interesting process, because it was during COVID, so a great majority of them did happen on Zoom. We had pretty good attendance, anywhere between 70, 25 sometimes, you know, I think the most that we had was about 80, 85 people. So it was well-attended by, by many people. We were able to break into groups. We were able to get some dialogue going, as well as having online surveys while we were doing the workshops, so we could see in the present moment what people were thinking. And then at the same time, from November 2020 till 2023 April, we had about 16 Town Council meetings. And then following that, or at the same time, it felt like it was happening, sometimes all at the same time, but we had a great number of them. From January 2021 to November 2022, we had nine Planning Commission meetings. And I will say that I would like to thank my Planning Commissioners, because they did take a lot of time to go through each one of the goals, policies, and objectives of the elements of our general plan, and they helped us a great deal to formulate a really, what I call, a solid document. So thank you all. I think everybody here was on that, within, working with us in that effort. And then on November 2020 to May 2021, we had three post-meetings. And then we went to the DITF, the Diversity Inclusionary Task Force, five times between October 21 and October 22. And then we went to our Design Review Board from June 22, 2022 through July 2022, and they helped us with the objective design standards that will be coming at our next meetings with respect to the zoning ordinances and changes to the zoning for development downtown in particular. So then what we did was, we had the workshops, and then we followed it with online surveys, and we uploaded all of these materials. And then, just so everybody knows, we did do all of the surveys and focus groups in Spanish to make sure that all community members were represented in this process. So from all of this, we created these, we created guiding principles, which is important that we, what we have for a general plan, and we've integrated them throughout the general plan. And they are livability, community, and sustainability. And throughout each element or each chapter, however you want to refer to it, we do, we weave all of that into those chapters. So a general plan has elements, and as I said, we actually have talked about them as chapters. We have the land use element that deals with a framework where we govern development patterns and how we maintain and enhance the character of Tiburon. Then we looked at the downtown and the housing element, which I know a lot of you have been focused on. The diversity, equity, and inclusionary element are chapters, a new chapter that we have included. We actually had a consultant that helped us with that, Ricardo Huerta, who, and he helped with the Spanish translation as well. Mobility that works, looks at transportation, noise, sustainability, conservation, open space, parks and recreation, and safety and resilience. So I know that, and I am going to focus a lot of what we're going to talk about on the housing element, because I believe that 99% of you are here to talk about that. And so I'd like to make sure that you understand what's required, how we got here, and, and what we need to do from this point forward. So every eight years, we must adopt and update, or update our housing element within the general plan, even though the general plan's span is longer. And the housing element has to provide goals, policies, quantitative objectives, and scheduled programs to preserve, improve, and develop housing. And identify and analyze existing and projected housing needs for all economic segments of the community, and identify adequate sites that are zoned and available within this eight-year housing cycle to meet our fair share of regional housing needs at all income levels. We must also affirmatively further fair housing. And, and this must be reviewed by the Department of Housing and Community Development, that I will refer to as HCD, to determine whether or not the element complies with state law. And then also, we must have this be internally consistent with all of the other chapters or the parts that I showed you previously of the general plan. In addition, it must include programs to promote the housing opportunities and read, and meet what we call the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, which is the RENA that has been distributed, those numbers have been distributed to each jurisdiction. So that's moving on to what happened with the housing and community development piece of this. So I'm sure you've been hearing about this in the paper, and you've also seen it through the documents that you've read for this particular project, but similar to all other California communities, the state has allocated housing units. And the state has allocated 639 housing units to Tiburon. And town staff and policymakers, that meaning the Planning Commission and Town Council and Post and DRB and the DITF have been meeting for the past two years to consider those housing sites and densities. The town has submitted two different housing elements to the state to consider. And the HCD, or the Housing and Community Development, has provided us extensive comments. HCD provided us a response to staff that limited the number of SB9 units the town could count. And the SB9 units are those, is a state bill that allowed people to subdivide properties and add housing behind their existing houses. And we allocated a number of vacant sites, as well as other sites, as part of a way to meet our numbers. And after much discussion, the state did not accept those. So we went back to Town Council and looked at some more sites and looked at what we could do. And staff was then directed to include Site H, which is what I would believe everybody is here for, to make up for the shortfall for these RENA number, to meet our RENA numbers. So we included that as part of the other opportunity sites, and that was, that analysis has been included in our EIR, along with the other housing sites. So all of the opportunity sites, or what we want to call housing sites, that are in the housing element, were analyzed as part of the Environmental Impact Report. And so as we went through our general plan, we found that there were some things that we needed to slip pages out. They weren't anything substantial. They were to show depictions and graphics that were more meaningful for the site or better, it showed better photos. And so on the downtown, when we were looking at sea level rise for the vulnerable outsides, we are proposing to include this graphic after page 59. And I'm doing this for the Planning Commission, because we'll have to include that change as part of any adoption to the resolution for the general plan. And then we're replacing the Main Street and Tiburon Boulevard cross-sections on page 68 with these, because it shows better how affected Main Street may be, and how we would raise the buildings and the street to accommodate for sea level rise. And we felt that these photos would better reflect Tiburon, so we replaced a photo on page 63 with the one, like this one to the right, and we included this photo to the right. So those are some changes. And finally, or close to finally, I believe, is the environmental review process, which the general plan is considered a project, and when you're, when you're considered a project, you must conduct environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act. So a draft EIR was prepared, and then we circulated that EIR for a period of 45 days, which ended on May 1st, which a lot of you have commented, and we have received those comments, and there are responses in the final EIR to those comments. And that is on the website. And then the EIR also discusses alternatives and has selected a preferred alternative, which was, all, all of those were evaluated. And the final EIR, as I said, provides responses to comments and includes a set of mitigation measures and a statement of overriding considerations for the Planning Commission to consider. So what are we going to do next, or what are we doing tonight? So the Planning Commission, as, as we're sitting here today, is conducting a public hearing. We're going to take public comment and receive any clarification. The Planning Commission will receive any clarification from staff and the consultants. And then we are recommending that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending to Town Council, because Town Council is the final decision-maker on this, the certification of the final EIR, and thereby adopting a statement of overriding consideration and the mitigation monitoring plan that I spoke about previously, and to adopt a resolution recommending to Town Council the adoption of the general plan. And with that, I conclude my presentation, and staff is available for comments, or not comments, but discussion.
And questions? So I have a few questions. Well, Commissioner Amir, yes, start.
I'll start. So I think we're a lot here, here for the situation with the Paradise Drive. So why don't you provide a little more expansion, kind of what, what locations we were looking at originally, why those locations are not appropriate anymore? For instance, the Cove, the Baptist Church? And then, and also just better understand, you know, why this has come, you know, at this stage and not during the, you know, 21, 22 hearings process? So a bit about the process here.
With respect to the housing sites?
Yeah, the housing site, specifically Housing Site H.
Okay, so I'm going to have Christina O'Rourke do that, because she has it all lined up for me.
Okay, okay, you can hear me. So we had, we had originally had two workshops on housing sites, and the housing sites that we had originally considered were downtown sites, which are in, made it into the final housing element. We also considered the Cove, as well as the Baptist Church, and, and the Reed School site as well, the vacant three-acre, I think it's about, almost three-acre portion of the Reed School site. So we had, at the end of that process, the property owner, the Tiburon Baptist Church, did not want to have their site considered for housing, as well as the owner of the Cove Shopping Center. So once we had, we didn't have property owner support for those sites, we needed to take them out of the, the housing element. So we were then looking at the downtown sites. Originally, we had recommended 40 to 45 units an acre on those sites. That would be probably approximately four-story buildings in the downtown. And, and we were also, you know, using other strategies as much as we could, looking at accessory dwelling units and what Deana was talking about, these SB9 units, which we were being a little aggressive on how we were counting those, because there wasn't any, it's a new law, and there wasn't any real guidance from HCD about how to quantify or calculate those units. So we thought we would, you know, try as much as we could, which we originally had planned on 174 SB9 units. That was in our first draft of the housing element. So after, so originally, the council, there was a lot of pushback on the four stories and the 40 to 45 units on the downtown site. The council wanted to minimize that, so we went down to 30 to 35 units. And at that point, this is before the first draft was sent to HCD, at that point, we kind of knew that our SB9 units, we had to have those all counted if we were going, going to meet our RENA numbers, and that that was going to be a bit of a stretch, but we had decided we would try it anyway. So we sent the first draft off to HCD. They took, they take three months to review that draft. That went, I believe it was in September, right, middle of September. And then when we got the draft back in December, it was clear that we could not count that many SB9 units. We need, we then went back to the Town Council to say, we need to find another, we need to find, come up with another strategy. We can go back to increasing the density downtown to 40 to 45 units an acre, or we could look at other sites. And at that point, we had looked at 45, 76 Paradise Drive before the first housing element had been submitted to HCD. But at this point, we needed another site, so the council directed us to include that into the second draft housing element, which is what we did. We then submitted that draft with that housing element site. So this is back in January, when there was two meetings that the council considered that site, January 18th, and another special meeting on January 25th. We then included it in the draft housing element that went to HCD on February, I think it was February 15th, 15th. And, and I think that's all of the history.
That's, it's, yeah, thank you so much for that, and it's, it's such a reminder to us and kind of an interesting overview of the process, the multi-year process now, where it has gone before the Planning Commission, before the Town Council several times, and sometimes a little bit back and forth. There's sort of a dialogue through those meetings between the bodies. So for example, with the downtown density, that was something we had actually encouraged, the more density, more levels in the downtown area as part of our input into the general plan, the housing element. And as you've explained, as I understand it from you and from reading the paper like everyone else, the council, there was, there was public input, there was commentary on that, on that, and the council came up with sort of a different conclusion. It's back before us at a different time, but we have, we, this has been ongoing. On that downtown density, I wanted to, I believe HCD has also weighed in on the kind of aggregation or the density downtown, and there have been some specific comment, comments by HCD about that and about distributing, distributing housing across the town. And then just before you answer, tell us the significance of a property owner not wanting, not being open to development on their property. What does that mean from the perspective of the state? What is, what needs to be demonstrated to the state?
So we have to demonstrate to the state that these sites are properly zoned in order to encourage housing, and that they are available during the housing element period. And HCD looks more, much more closely at any sites that we are identifying for lower-income housing. And the lower-income housing, the rules are kind of, kind of complicated, but essentially the sites have to be zoned at least 20 units an acre to pass the HCD test of, it's called a default density. So if a site does not have housing, property owner support, then it's just a site that we can't include, because it means that it's not, I mean, if the property owner says, we're not interested in developing this site, take it off your housing element site inventory, then we cannot demonstrate to HCD that that site actually is available for development over the planning period.
And if I may, Chair Williams, just to echo and support what Ms. O'Rourke said, essentially, HCD is looking for sites that have a realistic capacity to be developed, and if a property owner has said, I have no interest in developing this house, or this site for housing, HCD will reject that site from inclusion in the housing element and inclusion on your sites' inventory list.
And one follow-up question to that, and then I'll, I'll turn. I think that might conclude my questions. What are the implications of rejection by the state? What are the implications of all this? First of all, what under, what underlies the policy at a high level, not, not to get into the weeds, but this, these policy objectives that are integrated into statute? What is trying to be achieved there broadly? And more importantly, to this meeting, I think, what are the implications if we don't meet, if we get rejected by the state and don't meet, and don't comply with state law?
So taking your question, and what I heard were two parts, one being implications for not having an adopted housing element that's been found to be substantially in compliance with housing element law by HCD. And I think the second was more of a policy-level question, you know, what is it that we're trying to accomplish as a state, essentially, by having these housing elements in place? So, you know, at a really high level, your housing element is designed, and the town's job is to make housing development feasible. And I think it's either in your staff report, or I'm sure you've heard it elsewhere, you know, the town's job is not to put all the sticks in the ground, but to make the development feasibly possible through your regulations and through programs encouraging housing development and all the things that you've built into your housing element. With respect to the second part of your question, what happens if you don't have an adopted housing element? I'm sure you all have been following, you know, the, the stories around that, particularly with respect to what is called the so-called builder's remedy, and the ability of a developer or a property owner to submit a project if you don't have a housing element in place. And I can get into more of the detail of that if you would like, but essentially, the town has far less control over that type of project than you would if your housing element were in place and if your zoning were in place in support of your housing element. So that's one major implication that's gotten a lot of press lately. Other implications include things like funding availability through the state. You need to have a certified housing element in order to have funding in place. There are litigation that can ensue over not having a housing element, either from public interest groups or even from the state itself, that you can have the state step in and actually take over your zoning and prevent development in your town. So the, the, the implications of not having an adopted housing element are real, and I think we're seeing them in this housing element cycle, particularly through Southern California, which went before. We are going through this as Northern California region, have become more utilized also, and more challenges are being brought against jurisdictions, housing elements, and jurisdictions that don't have them in place.
Thank you.
Sure.
Very informative. Commissioner DeFever?
Yes. You mentioned that we need to have the properties, the appropriate number of properties in place when we report to the HCD to satisfy our quota. But it's an eight-year period upon which that this plan that we've put into place is in effect. I did notice in some of the materials that it seems that we have a responsibility to update them during the eight-year period. To what extent does that responsibility occur? For example, if, if one of the property owners right now is willing to build something, but then is no longer willing to build something in a year, are we required to reach out to everyone regularly, or what, what does the requirement look like?
Thank you, Commissioner. I think what you're asking about is the no-net loss provisions in housing element law, and if that's not true, stop me, and I won't go into too much detail. But essentially, the jurisdiction has to maintain enough capacity to meet your RENA during the planning cycle. So once your housing element So once your housing element is, um, adopted and we have that capacity in place, if a project on, um, a, a site that's in your sites inventory is developed at a lower capacity than what was identified in your housing element, or if it's developed for something else, or if a site becomes unavailable, um, then you would need to have other sites available to meet that need. So you've built in a buffer into your housing element, but you may also have to take action when you approve a project or something else comes forward to make up for that loss, if you will, and identify other sites that can accommodate the, the RENA that's not been met by, um, the housing, uh, the site, that site on your housing sites inventory that had a different development occur than what was projected.
And when is the inventory assessed?
Well, it's assessed now, and then it's assessed sort of on an ongoing basis as projects come forward. Um, I think it's somewhat different question you're asking is, well, what if a, a property owner changes their mind? Um, I don't think we would formally know about that until a development proposal came forward on that project, on that property.
So the next planning period is in seven years or so, when the eighth year, uh, it expires, when the current plan is expiring?
Uh, correct, although you do have your annual housing progress reports that, um, come before the planning commission and the town council on an annual basis that literally report your progress, um, toward meeting all of your general plan goals. There's a separate portion of it that's been a little more, um, uh, structured, that goes to HCD, that reports specifically on your progress on your housing element. And there are implications if you're not meeting your, uh, kind of broken-down annual goals toward meeting your housing. At, I think the midpoint, HCD analyzes jurisdiction's progress and creates the SB 35 list. And if you are on that list because you haven't made, um, significant or adequate progress toward meeting your RENA, then there are, um, by right projects that can come forward in your jurisdiction.
How have we fared in the last eight years, per, for example, in Tiburon?
So it's been a little different, um, but we do not have a lot of new housing that is built in the last eight years. Um, usually, we're looking at two, maybe three new houses a year. So we, we're, we're, we're running pretty low from the 79 that we're supposed to have.
Well, what consequences have occurred from HCD?
At this point, nothing, but I, this cycle is a lot different than what we've seen in the past. Um, the process is different, um, the scrutiny is different, the RENA allocations for us are eight times more than there were before. And I think every jurisdiction is finding that same kind of place. And so I would say that because of the initiative and because of the new laws that have come into place, the scrutiny will be much higher for us to meet these numbers.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, I had, I had one follow-up. Hello? Not sure it works. I had one follow-up, um, to what, um, let's see, to what the commissioner asked before. I guess on the, on the downtown, remind me, on the four-story buildings that were proposed, um, there was a pushback from the state on that, right? Or, or is it only a town council decision not to do a four-story? Can you remind me?
That was a town council decision.
It was down, uh, following, following the hearings of, uh, um, the January 18th and January 25th hearings, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
There was also, we were also considering a fourth-story bonus on some of the corner sites at Beach Road and Tiburon Boulevard, because some of those sites we were not, we can't require, uh, commercial, and we wanted to try to incentivize some small commercial in the corners. And the town council also, um, rejected that. So we do not have a fourth-story bonus either.
Right, but even with the, just saying, even with the fourth story, because we were short on the SB nine, we were still short on, on the total number?
Yeah.
Like someone's phone is, is, there we go.
Okay. We were still short on, on the total number.
We were, we were sure.
Is that correct? Because of the, because of the SB nine commentary?
Because we couldn't count all of the SB nine units that we wanted to, that we wanted to count. Again, we went from 174 in our first draft, and I think we're right now down to 27.
Okay, all right.
So, am I mistaken in believing that HCD, and maybe I, I'm not sure where I read this, to be honest, there's a lot of material, and there's been a lot of reading, was, is, um, discouraging, um, uh, sort of a, um, a lot, a concentration of housing downtown?
Yes, and that's, um, that's really due to affirmatively furthering fair housing, so they do not, um, want us to concentrate the, all of the low-income sites in one area. It's, um, it's a bit of a conundrum because the, one of the reasons why the town's RENA was so high is because of the ferry term, what they consider to be a ferry terminal and the public transit in downtown. And, and that's also where the services are. So it's on transit routes, it's on, it's near services, it's actually, you know, a good place to put housing, but then, at the same time, they don't want us to concentrate the housing in, in one particular area.
And that's part of the re, RENA, sort of regional housing need allocation.
Yeah, and it's more, uh, it's really more about the low-income, lower-income housing that they really want to be, to be spread throughout town.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for that clarification. Um, any further questions of staff? I had, I had a question that may come up as, oh, just a process question for tonight. Typically, when there's a presentation, often we have an applicant, the public will speak, and then there's sort of an opportunity to respond to questions that come up. Is that the same process we'll follow tonight? If there are questions that you will respond to as staff, sort of like the, what we've called the rebuttal period, but it's just an opportunity to provide more clarification.
Uh, Chair Williams, if, if I may, I mean, I think this is the procedure that we would recommend you follow. When the commission's done asking their clarifying questions, you will open for public comment. Each public commenter, I believe, is typically given three minutes, given this number of people in the room. It would not be unusual for the commission to decide to limit that to a lower amount of time, maybe two minutes, to ask people, you know, to show support. They don't need to say the same thing, you can raise your hand, all those good things.
Right, we've done that many times before.
And then, um, we as staff will keep a list of questions during the public comment period. When public comment is over and you've closed public comment, we'll be happy to respond to any questions that the commission would like us to, and then the commission can deliberate.
Okay, thank you so much. That's a helpful clarification. All right.
Okay, I'm all set.
Okay, no, no more questions, um, of staff, sorry about the microphone. So what I am going to do is, um, open up the, this agenda item for public comment. Um, and what, oh, we have our, at least of a podium, now we have this desk. And I'll ask, uh, people to, uh, come up. If a lot of people speak, it's actually helpful to line up or indicate that you'd like to speak, so I get a sense of, I'm assuming everyone here wants to speak. I think it's probably a safe assumption. Um, so I am going to ask people to do their best to limit their comments to two minutes to manage the proceedings, it's, it, everyone will be here for a long time. Um, I'm asking Commissioner Amir to help time keep, with the timekeeping. So he'll start timing, and he'll give you a, um, a, a warning. Um, one moment before I, uh, I might have you be the first speaker.
A suggestion would be, why don't you get a show of hands, how many people would actually like to speak? Your, your.
You know, that is not, it's typically, I don't, um, I, we, we sort of set our proceedings, but that's not a bad idea. Um, we've done that in the past, so, um, how many people would like to speak? Well, you know, uh, so not everybody wishes to speak. It's still a fair amount. So it's still a fair amount, so we, and, and also, um, an important, something that's important to keep in mind is, we've read all of the comments. We have read, uh, many, many comment letters, um, both recently, uh, submitted and submitted as part of the EIR process. Um, and, you know, and we've heard them as commissioners, um, in, in meetings. So you don't need, while, while it's helpful to, um, kind of hit really relevant, um, like your pertinent comments, um, uh, and it is, this is your opportunity to speak, so, um, it's an, an important opportunity that we will protect. It's not necessarily, it's not essential to, to, you know, reiterate everything that the person before you spoke. If you agree with them, you can say, I agree. You know, I embrace those comments, and here's an additional point. Um, that just helps everybody, so we're really staying laser-focused on, um, on, you know, on, uh, how many people feel a certain way and, and, and comments that are really directly relevant to the issue before us tonight. So, uh, so what we'll do is we'll have people come up one at a time. Please state your name for the record clearly into the microphone, and then we'll start timing, um, for two minutes. And Commissioner Amir will give, um, uh, you know, give you an, uh, a heads up when your time is, is soon to expire. So the first person who wishes to speak, don't be shy. Yes, absolutely.
And we do ask that you, yeah, move that as close as you can, because it's not the best mic. Want to make sure we get everything on the record. Thank you.
My name's Robert Wolfson, I live in Paradise Cay. Now, I just found out about this project, uh, two months ago, so I've heard it was in the ARC, but I don't read the ARC, and I don't know if you did a mailing out to everybody at Paradise Cay. Maybe, maybe you did, and I just didn't see it. But in any event, um, I just think the whole idea of building all these homes there is insane. In fact, it, it feels like you didn't have enough other areas where you could build. And so the decision was made, well, let's just do it here. There's a nice piece of property. Instead of doing it downtown or where the church property is, which would be kind of like, that would be a good place to put a lot of housing, let's just put it on this little country road, and maybe we can get away with this. Uh, I mean, I bicycle on Paradise Drive, you guys know all about.
Oh, sorry, um, we'll just reserve, uh, responding to comment.
Thank you, though.
But it's a nice gesture.
You guys know, I'm sure, that Paradise Drive is one of the most popular bicycling places in Marin, maybe even in the Bay Area. I bicycle there myself. The idea of having 186 cars, and so many parking spaces you've allotted, it would, I think it might completely ruin this incredible asset for our community, which is the Paradise Drive bicycling, as a bicycle route. And the other thing, which is rather obvious, is this entire neighborhood is single-family homes. And, you know, often there'd be an objection in such a neighborhood to a four-plex or to a eight-plex, and here, you're talking about 93 units. So I just think it's, uh, terribly damaging and, uh, ruinous to some of the environment that we all live in and love, those of us who live over there.
Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Wendy Shearn. I don't live in, we don't live in the town, we live in Paradise Cay, we live in the county.
What was your last name?
Shearn, S-H-E-A-R-N.
Thank you.
Um, it feels like the town is trying to solve its housing problem by putting houses in this non-contiguous land that would actually be county land aside, aside from the basic fluke of needing, having needed sewage hookups. And in actuality, in most states in the country, it's not legal for annexation of non-contiguous land into a municipality. I guess in California, it's legal, but intuition tells you that it doesn't make sense to take this little piece of land and, and solve this, you know, serious housing issue, because it doesn't make sense. It does sort of feels like the town is smokescreening and, you know, kind of dumping its problems on us, if you will, sorry for the awkward language. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello? Oh, that was loud. Hi, my name is Mary Ann Chenon, I live on Old Landing Road. I oppose the housing element of the general plan 2040 as the site inventory includes the site H, which would allow, uh, with the zoning, um, seen as 93 to 118 units be built on the site. I participated in the workshops and the surveys about site H and it was, and, site H, sorry, I'm very nervous, was never included, so it was not vetted nor supported by the community, as was reported to HCD. I think that it became clear at the recent open house, and again, most likely at this meeting, that there is a lot of opposition to rezoning and developing on this site at that density. When the property was pre-zoned in 2021, the community development department concluded that the site could not support more than four units due to numerous environmental constraints. This very planning commission agreed. When the property was next considered at the August 2022 town council meeting, the analysis was the same, that the site should not be included in housing inventory and is not viable for high-density multifamily housing because of its location on Paradise Drive, a lack of time to conduct robust community outreach, and because there were still environmental constraints, because those do not go away. But as HCD's deadline approached, suddenly, the site magically became able to hold 93 units, the exact number. The town is coming up short for its housing element. I don't think so, it's still not feasible. We have seen one developer's plan, and the development on this site at that scale would be devastating for wildlife, neighbors, visitors, bikers, and children going to school. The town should immediately remove site H from inventory, but if no other viable sites can be identified to HCD within the next 21 days, then I would support first rezoning all other sites that the town has identified as suitable for higher-density development, whether or not their present owners are interested.
Your time.
Yep, in preparation for an owner to change their mind in the affirmative.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Sorry, I, I'll have to ask people not to applaud. Um, but, but trust me, we do know that you all, we, we are, we understand that many, many people share that view and support that view.
Hi, um, excuse me, my name is Jeffrey Chen, I like to follow my wife, and I've been on Old Landing Road for almost 30 years. And in the, uh, interest of time, Mr. Amir, if you're timing me, Dr. Louie has agreed to cede a minute of his time. We were told we would have three minutes, and if I go over, I have at least his minute, and if anybody else wants to give me a minute.
That is absolutely fine.
Thank you very much. Because this should not be rushed, as it was. There are so many reasons why site H is inappropriate for very high-density redevelopment, and so many reasons why it shouldn't have been identified in the revised housing element to begin with, that it would take me hours to list them. I submit the reason that the town needed to add site H in January and February at the last minute is because it didn't create enough incentives to have other people in this town come forward to offer their sites for development, including especially ADU owners, or people who would be interested in that. Now, it, it came to, um, our, I'm going to, I'm going to limit the rest of my remarks to constructive suggestions of what to do now, because you folks are in a pickle with HCD. And I don't, you don't think what your plan is, is going to get you out of that pickle. So let me make some suggestions. At first, it came to my attention just today that the owner of a different vacant 27-acre property between Hacienda and Paradise Drive tried to express interest through his broker in early February of this year in having his property redeveloped. But the request to meet with Ms. Tassini was ignored, according to the owner's agent. Now, I don't know if, um, because I haven't had time to, to check with him, if the owner, Marty Winter, is still interested. But I submit to you that the town has enough time before resubmitting its housing element to HCD for final approval to substitute the Winter site for site H. You do have enough to time to do it, you can give public notice if he's interested, and you can substitute it. Now, you scramble to include site H, scramble to substitute the Winter site if it's available. All you need is owner interest, prompt notice to the public, and the substitution of site W for site H in the EIR and the plan, and the housing element. Now, if the town declines to do that, then you need to rezone more appropriate sites before rezoning site H, so you can take advantage of the ability to substitute alternatives before this gets further worse and worse. You can encourage owners of those sites, or new owners, to apply for redevelopment in place of site H. The town can, can and should immediately rezone for 40 to 45 units per acre, the Cove Center site, the Baptist Church site, and the parcels in downtown that were in the housing plan, and you don't need owner interest to do that, you have legislative prerogative to do that. The, the town should also immediately reach out by letter, not just by putting it on a website, but by letter, to anybody, all the residents, who might be interested in building ADUs. As you say, you affirmatively reached out to the Sierra Pines LLC, the owner of site H. And you should offer the Tiburon residents more flexible standards and reduced fees to incentivize this, as your staff recommended, to the town council, which, before it held its meeting on January 18, 2023, when it decided to include site H. That's still open to you. I cannot comprehend why this town reached out preferentially to Sierra Pines to see if it would be interested in very high density development of site H and not to its other residents, like Mr. Winters, or to all the Tiburon residents who might be interested in adding ADUs. I also cannot comprehend why Tiburon would include site H for very high-density include Site H for very high-density rezoning and redevelopment, when its own staff twice before concluded that Site H cannot support more than four dwelling units due to a variety of constraints. So to quote Ms. Tassini after she saw one developer's plan to develop 82 units on Site H, this is a terrible plan. And you still have time to do the right thing and not run afoul of HCD by keeping Site H in.
We're done.
One last remark. If you, if you need to demonstrate community engagement and proper rezoning of Site H to get HCD to sign off on the housing element, I suspect you will not get their sign off. But you will if you substitute something that people aren't so objecting to. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And, oh, I just wanted to say, thank you. I did read your letter very carefully, and I will have follow-up questions for staff.
Two minutes. Michael O'Donnell, Tiburon resident for 44 years. I have a lot of empathy for all these ladies on the right of me. The pressure being put down on them by these faceless people from Sacramento. I bet none of them have even been here. I want to know some things. First of all, when there's so much county around town of Tiburon, Ms. Tassini sat right there last open house with a couple, a lot of people around her, and she said, if you're, if you're from, if you're from Paradise Cay, for example, I'm not, don't even bother to give me an email, because you don't count your county. There's got to be a combination between county and town, when the county surrounds the town. Now, 639, who came up with that number? And how did they do it? Was it in a bar near the Capitol? It doesn't make sense if you've ever been here. Where are you going to put these, and Mill Valley is like 1,200. There are, I just read, 109 municipalities that are under this gun, and 93 of them are not in compliance after three years. So something isn't right. I don't think people are just ignoring this at all. This is a bad plan. Dead man's curve up there. This is a bad plan. We're all for low-income housing and all that. I think that's good. We're not anti anything that at all. This is a stupid, also, last one, that was county property that was recently annexed to make town of Tiburon. That sounds like something Washington would do. What was all that about? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm John Larson. I'm the president of our Matteo Drive Homeowners Association. Probably the oldest guy in the room here, going on 82. But my contribution to Tiburon, we worked with Mayor Dennis Rocky, my best friend, Peter Berg, if any of you guys weren't born back then. But we built Macagny. And thank you for, for your work. Very quickly, 40, we, our homeowners association, 17 homes on the hill, built in 75. So we've got 25 acres up there, 17 homes, so a little bit over an acre per home. And I was sitting in my chair two weeks ago and read the ARC, and was dumbfounded to learn, I'm the president, all 17 homes, not one of us had heard before the article on, the ARC, that there were potentially 94 homes going to be built right down below us on Paradise Drive. It's a, I don't know how many of you have driven it lately. There's no lighting there. There's no public transportation. It's a terrible winding road, no place for bike lanes. My wife was in a terrible accident. A biker drove right into her on a sharp curve coming around. They didn't see each other. And so there's no lighting there, as I say, no public transportation. So there are lots and lots of considerations why that's really a terrible place to put in, I guess, 94 units. Our neighborhood, we, you can't stop progress. This is, also, the owner is America. He has a right to develop his property and make money on it. Three of our 17 homes said they would have bought it two years ago. If they'd known it was for sale, nobody did. And they were going to donate it to a children's park. But, so, so just by way of summary, there are lots and lots of reasons why that's, that's a terrible place. On the other hand, our 17 think that four to seven homes is totally appropriate, totally, totally appropriate for, for the area. Four to seven homes that have been discussed previously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I was saying, you've, everyone's been so succinct and really thoughtful, and obviously there's discretion to, you know, let you conclude your remarks.
Yeah. Good evening, commissioners. Thank you. I know you guys have a hard job in front of you, and I appreciate that. I was the homeowners' president for many years in Paradise Cay, and have lived in the Cay for about almost 20 years. Love the.
Give your name.
Mark Holstrom. I'm sorry.
Sorry. Thank you.
You know, when I think about that property, I have a lot of concerns. My biggest concern is that we, that what was announced about all the communication with neighbors that has happened over many years has not happened with anyone on that side in the county. So you have a bunch of people here that are really upset because we have not been included. This has been a bait and switch. It's not a continuous property. Most of us didn't know that the town of Tiburon had actually taken over that land. It's already been suggested by Commissioner Amir that the town has a plan to put four stories and could meet the housing unit, and just doesn't want it. So there is a plan. You have a plan. Take the plan. Paradise Cay is one of the most dangerous roads. None of our kids, I have three kids that grew up and are able to ride bikes on that road. It's actually illegal to pass a car on Paradise Drive. If you go over the yellow line, it's actually illegal. There's a law that says you have to maintain three feet from somebody, and you're legally not allowed to go over the yellow lines. So we literally cannot support it. If you're talking about Commissioner, a plan and, and infrastructure, and you're spending millions and millions of dollars on sea, the, the climate change, and the suggested rise in tides, you're spending millions of dollars on protecting land just above Tiburon, think about infrastructure. If you're going to put in 100 units, put in bike lanes, expand that road, like, put in tons of infrastructure to make it viable so that we can support that type of people. You're moving from a rural environment. You're creating a more urban, kind of high-volume environment with infrastructure that we just frankly don't have. I'm deeply against this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question of clarification on your early comments?
Actually, you know what? We don't do Q and A as part of the public comment period. But as you're making your comment, maybe you can kind of weave in the concern.
You mentioned the earlier parcels of interest.
Sorry, your name for the record?
Yeah.
My name is Scott Miller. Yes, I'm 153 Jamaica and Paradise Cay as well. You mentioned the Cove and the Baptist Church as being original sites of interest. And did those property owners change their mind? Or were they approached with a possible selection and weren't interested? Or how did that work?
So that, so we won't, so at, when we, after the public comment period, and we go back to staff, that's, that is a question, outstanding question that I have, just for clarification, because it's come up a few times here, as to, you know, that kind of evolution, how that came about. So I think that's something that we'll be able to get more clarity on.
Yeah.
But we'll do it as part of the normal process.
Confusing to me, because that led to H being possible. So let me, my, my statements. Again, I'm Scott Miller in Paradise Cay. My biggest concern, some people have touched on it, is safety. And we've lived in Paradise Cay for 20 years. My wife and young son were severely injured in a head-on accident on Paradise Drive. Our car was totaled by an impatient driver was stuck behind a lot of cars that tried to pass and just smashed our car and injured my wife and son. So we all know firsthand of accidents on that road. Happens all the time. Two brothers drove off at 80-foot drop, smashed into one of our neighbor's house. It happens all the time. And to my knowledge, there's never been a comprehensive safety assessment of that active portion of Paradise Drive. And I think it's imperative that has to happen. This portion of Paradise Drive is narrow, curvy, mountain-type road, two lanes, and solid double-yellow line from Tresso Glen to Marin County Day, as Mark mentioned as well. There's a sign posted there that says 20 miles an hour, next to two miles. So as a result, postal, garbage, school buses routinely block traffic. There's no shoulder to pull over and allow the passage of emergency service vehicles during this daily traffic congestion. And, and it's just in, literally, an accident waiting to happen. So this is a dangerous road. We've never allowed our children in 20 years to walk or ride bikes on this stretch of road. And adding a new development with hundreds of new residents that includes low-income housing would place those new residents in an isolated location devoid of shopping, services, playgrounds, and ballparks. Any new development of this magnitude should require a comprehensive upgrade on Paradise Drive to include pullouts, sidewalks, passing lanes, and a dedicated bike lane, as Corta Madera's done recently. I've got a bunch of other concerns, environmental and, and water and sewage, but safety is my biggest concern.
And you submitted a comment as well. You submitted an email. Yes, so I recall that, those comments, yeah.
Hello. Thank you for having this meeting. My name is Jeannie Rizzo, and I live in Paradise Drive near Taylor Road. I want to just commend the comments on safety, being, having to take our lives in our hands just to get out of our driveway. We've reported speeding to the police on multiple occasions, and the response back was only 30% of the people we found were speeding. That wasn't enough to do anything. So we know what we're dealing with. Those of us who live on Paradise Drive really have to be conscious, and nobody, we have people standing at the top of the driveway to guide somebody out, because that road is so treacherous. So we've got the safety issue. The other piece I want to bring up is I don't think your EIR, your SEQA EIR, would stand the test of a challenge to it. And it has to do with community. It has to do with safety. It has to do with the cumulative impacts, which are being considered by the state, by SEQA challenges. So I think you're going to have a problem with SEQA. I think our course is the Town Council. If your original recommendations was what they were, and it was rejected by the town, then I would say, let's collectively go back to the Town Council and ask them to reconsider that decision. Because I think the, the first one that you came up with made sense. This one does not. So I support the comments that went before me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Hi there. Hi.
Quicker. My name is Bill Robbins. I've been a resident here for less than a year with my wife. I live at 207 Paradise Drive. I'm familiar with Paradise Drive, as my son lives in Corta Madera on Paradise Drive. I have driven it many times, and the last two speakers have been eloquent about the safety of that road. I drive the road. We are required to give three feet to bicyclists. I respect bicyclists, and it's no problem. I've had people honk behind me of going too slowly, even though I'm going 25 miles an hour. The bikes go faster. Quite frankly, I don't think you have the time or the money to have that site developed within eight years. I was stunned in the last month to read that this site was being considered for development. Reading the ARC, the most recent ARC, and I just purchased it after a year, for the density there is, I don't know who was thinking of accepting that for you. I do agree that they have to come up with, with the units unless you, as a community, and your surrounding communities raise holy hell with Sacramento and the HCD. This reminds me of ABAG years ago, where they dictated to all cities and counties what they expected to have done. That was never done. No developer, no city council, no planning commission ever followed those guidelines. And I will say that even though we have a ferry terminal in Tiburon, I don't know how the ferry service pays for itself with the number of people I see getting on or getting off that are other than tourists. I would say, take this to the council. You should not forward this to the city council for approval.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Jim Neese. I live at the corner of Paradise Drive and Taylor Road. I happen to be a licensed contractor and do quite a bit of work in and around the Tiburon jurisdiction. Also, so from a standpoint, my question relates to, and queries relate to that particular location, A, we have a drainage culvert that drains off of Taylor Road, drains off of Ring Mountain through our property, and the amount of volume of water that we take from that hillside that goes through our property, then has a drainage culvert at the base of the road. We have a turn lane that turns left and goes up to Taylor Road. I came to the open house on Saturday, and I walked around to the different stations that were set up here. I asked questions, and my questions basically specifically relate to the engineering requirements that would be required to make a public right-of-way, municipal turn lane, a bike lane, and all the things that would create the safety concerns that were raised earlier, that I don't even think that that roadway is deemed buildable or engineerable in that turn lane, to have drainage on the opposite side of the road. So I'm questioning the vetting process that's gone into this, naming this site as even being able to develop, or even be able to be suited for development, given just water runoff that comes. That corner right there already floods. When we get water, when we get rain, excessive rain, the low-lying area on the other side of that turn is completely flooded out. There's no drainage plan. There's no, there's no mapping in place. There's no civil engineering work that I've seen done for that site. There's nowhere for the water to go already. So when you add, you go in and you start engineering that site for additional roadway development, and you start shoring up the other side of the road, what happens to the opposite side of the road, and all the water that's already finds itself stable and sitting on that side of the roadway? So my, my question really relates to what vetting process has been done to even deter, to even determine that that site is deemed buildable, to that extent.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
How are you guys doing? I'm Bill Clements. I live on Paradise as well, in the heavily negatively impacted area by this proposal. For all the reasons I already cited, I won't repeat them. But we deal with reckless driving constantly, and a lot of unsafe conditions, which this project would exacerbate, and not to mention Mr. Neese's comments about that particular location being, I'm sure you guys have been there, you know, an extraordinarily chicane road at that point. Looks, they wouldn't even build that on a, on a racetrack. It's too dangerous. I think we're all collectively in a pickle. Cramdown from the Weiner bill has put extraordinary pressure on every municipality. Its dean says, you know, this place has been built out for many years. We've been building two or three new homes a year, and now we're supposed to put in 700. How is anybody supposed to do that, right? The logic is impossible. The only shot we have, in my humble opinion, is that we have to revisit the density on the downtown sites, because I was in all the early Zoom meetings, and we were debating about, well, is it three stories, or four stories, or five stories? Once we go up above the ground downtown, where we've got transportation, where, where people can get back and forth to the city, where they can get to a job, where they can get to services, where they can walk to the grocery store, an extra floor or two downtown doesn't change the character of the town. I mean, the logic of using this Paradise Drive site would be like, well, let's take, if we can zone 45 units to an acre, let's take a one-acre lot in, in, in Tiburon and build a 40, you know, a 40-story building and give everybody a full floor. I mean, it, you know, I, I understand, we've got to find a solution. It's not on this 4576 Paradise Drive. That is clearly like the most inappropriate, unworkable, unfair to all of the residents, to the community, to all the people who use this area, who are not residents here, all the recreational access that's involved. And so, look, it's not you guys. It's got to go back to the Town Council. We've already said, look, we tried, da-da-da-da-da. Town Council shut us down. So what are we supposed to do? We throw it, we kick the problem down, over this can on Paradise Drive. It's absolutely unworkable.
Good evening.
Hi.
I'm Ken Royal from Paradise K and I just kind of echo some of the things that I just heard, but more specifically, I'm a recent retiree of the Tiburon Fire Protection District. I had the good fortune of serving this community for over 20 years. Mostly working in the capacity of transporting paramedic. I can tell you, I've been on a number of motor vehicle accidents in that area specifically, just around Station 10, which sits on the corner of Trestle Glen and Paradise Drive. Many bicyclist accidents, many motor vehicle accidents, many pedestrian-involved motor vehicle accidents, some fatalities. It's a dangerous spot. I also had two children that I reared in Paradise K there and would always let them know that that part of Paradise, of Paradise Drive is a target hazard and very dangerous. We'd never allow them to ride their bicycles or skateboard or even walk on that segment of roadway. What's kind of interesting is I haven't heard from one gentleman that talked about the drainage issue of that area. What I'd like to bring to the panel here is fire flow. Tell me what you've examined about fire flow for that area? Because I will tell you that there is one hydrant. That's not even our most hottest hydrant, we would call it, okay? Your most highest-capacity hydrant that we offer in this entire district. It's like the second highest and it's only one hydrant. That would be sufficient for probably two to three homes. Certainly not a 93-unit complex. So, what has been done to study the fire flow? Has the fire marshal been contacted? What has Mike Lantier mentioned about the fire flow inadequacies of this area? And what it would take to make that a realistic viable property? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
I'm Sophia Kingman.
I live at 19 Hillcrest Road. I grew up on that street and I've lived there for 23 years.
Chair Williams, I apologize for interrupting. If the speaker could just pull the mic closer, it's really hard for that to pick it up.
I'm Sophia Kingman. I grew, K-I-N-G-M-A-N. I live at 19 Hillcrest Road. I grew up on that street for 15 years and then I've lived at 19 Hillcrest for 23 years. I can actually see the site that's being, you know, the H site from my house. I love Tiburon. I mean, it's really part of who I am and my kids and my husband and I totally understand where you're coming from, but there's so many things that don't make sense to me just as an average person. One of them is that that whole area on Paradise is this idyllic, beautiful area and it doesn't have anything like what you're proposing. It's so out of the, it just doesn't, there's nothing like it. What you're proposing is so out of, not proportion, but I don't know what the word is, but it's just, it's not, yeah, not in the character of the area at all. So, you're changing this entire area and I understand why, but it just, you know, in the name of progress, we're doing, we're ruining an area, basically, and it's really unsafe. I've seen accidents. I don't let my kids on that, on Paradise Drive. And what's more, we had, we all know when we had traffic a couple of years ago or a year ago on Tiburon Boulevard, I don't know how we're going to get, if we have like this clogged section with all of this development, how are we going to get safety, you know, personnel out of Tiburon? If there's a mini earthquake or anything, how are we going to get? We have one way of getting out of this town for people and that concerns me a lot. So, you know, I'm not an expert. I'm not, you know, the head of a community, but I love this area and I'm, you know, I really am totally against this. And I also didn't hear about this. I heard about it in, you know, the ARC just sort of by accident. I'm not even, you know, and that does concern me because I know there must be other people. I know a lot of people who don't, I mean, I didn't go out and petition or send flyers or anything, but I know a lot of neighbors who I think would be concerned about this. So, I just, I don't usually talk at these things, but this is really, I just, I'm totally against it, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Okay. Is there anybody else? This is, yes, please step up and this is the opportunity. We will, we don't, we'll have, staff can address issues that have come up. I have a number of follow-up questions that relate to comments that have come up, but we don't go back and forth. So, this is the opportunity to make your comment, to get sort of questions on the table.
Hello, my name's Beth Gassel and I'm here tonight representing myself and my husband, James. We reside at 4505 Paradise Drive. And a couple of things, really appreciate this has been a multi-year process. This is not an easy process that everyone's been working on to try and find a good solution. I think our main concern is really, we echo what's been said tonight, just the late notification to the change in the housing element, adding a site on the backside of Paradise Drive that we don't feel has received enough evaluation. We also, we came in to talk to the town when we first read about it in the ARC and expressed our concern and we were advised that there just were really no other locations. The town had really searched, you know, far and wide across Tiburon to try and find a suitable site since it couldn't be concentrated downtown. But we also came to find out that an email had been sent to the town regarding a parcel, APN number 039-21-15, which is a 27-acre parcel, cited at the top of Hacienda. I know that Jeff Channon referred to it earlier. A realtor had reached out to the town saying that, you know, the owner of this parcel might be interested in having his site evaluated as a potential housing option. It's 27 acres and that same actual owner actually submitted an email tonight to the town stating that he remains interested in his land as an option for the rezoning and used to satisfy the housing requirements being imposed. He had not heard back from the town, but he wanted to reach out again to see if we all might sit down and look to see if this could be an option. Please let me know when you have time. And it's signed by Marty Winter. He's the owner of the property. And so, I would just really encourage you just to try and investigate other options, whether that's, you know, adding another story downtown where I really think that's your best options, or rezoning the sites at the Cove or the Baptist Church, or perhaps this site that Mr. Winter has to offer could be evaluated. You know, I'm not trying to kick the can down the road to another property. I know it is somewhat off Paradise, but it is, you know, at the top of Hacienda and perhaps there's better ingress and egress with Trestle Glen and not having to drive back and forth on Paradise Drive. We hear numerous accidents outside our home and we just really are against it for the safety, environmental, and traffic purposes. So, hope you'll consider that site.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Barbara Kautz. I'm an attorney representing the owners of Site H and I should also mention that I've lived on Paradise Drive for nearly 46 years. Our son used to ride his bike to Redwood every day for two years, so I'm pretty familiar with the city, with it. I think the town is in the unenviable position right now of not having a viable alternative to Site H. That's why Site H was put in the housing element to begin with. In terms of, your staff has responded about most of the sites, so I won't repeat what was in our, the letter we submitted today, but HCD has particularly emphasized that the town needs to support housing mobility throughout the town and concentrating all the multifamily units or almost all the multifamily units in the downtown does not do that. It's correct that the site is designated for above moderate at a pretty, at what's usually considered a pretty modest density of 10 units an acre. 18 of the units will need to be affordable under the town's inclusion area ordinance. And the truth is that density at that, you know, townhouse-type density, which is what 10 units an acre are, will be substantially less expensive than the kind of homes that are being developed now, it's like the ones I go by every day on Trestle Glen. And they will be substantially less expensive and open the door to more families locating in the town. The school district's been having a decrease in families. And I'd just conclude by saying that the site plan that was in today's ARC is not anything that the applicant had seen nor anything that the, or that the owner has seen or anything that anyone is intending to submit and lots more study needs to be done before, you know, a plan is presented for the property.
Just a point of clarification, my understanding is that there is no application or development proposal.
There's no application and no one is ready to make an application right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ron Goulden. I've got a couple of questions. You said to direct them to you, but they're for staff. Excuse me. Sure. My name is Ron Goulden and my questions are generally for staff, but they are addressed to the commission. First off, what is the current zoning on Parcel H for the number of units? Question, second related to that is I believe her staff, I heard staff say that the submittal to the state involves the current zoning for that parcel, not the proposed zoning, and I may have misunderstood that. The next question is, what would be the process to rezone Parcel H for 10 units per acre? And the last question was, how is the 10 units per acre developed? Who came up with that number? And those are my questions for staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Cynthia Massey Kim and I live at 103 Trinidad. I'll try to keep this quick.
Speak into the microphone.
My name is Cynthia Massey Kim. I live at 103 Trinidad and I oppose the rezoning and development of 93 units at 4576 Paradise Drive. It has been said by the town multiple times that we, the Paradise community, do not matter and that we don't count, but I strongly hope and request that the concerns, that our concerns are taken into serious consideration. We may be unincorporated and labeled as a sphere of influence, but we are the ones who live right behind or close enough to the property to feel the impacts. So, please exclude Site H from the list. Shouldn't there be a thorough review of the lot, whether the engineering of the parcel is appropriate before submission? We know that there are existing problems on the property. I'm pretty sure the commission decided that when you determined it was allotted, should be allotted for four. Has the town investigated how further erosion will be mitigated or how runoff from the property won't contaminate the bay? I believe that's protected by the codes. What about the culverts and drainage issue? What about BCDC? How does the town consider a lot with an alleged violation and easily include it into the housing element without a cleared resolution? I can't speak for all the K residents, but this was never about not wanting change. Things change all the time. It's about being a respectful neighbor, honest and transparent. I find this new discovery of wanting to leave the community pretty ironic. What happened to, quote, "Providing a learning and growth experience for the family through a small-scale, sustainable food production," or does that not apply if the development falls through? Can we nix the conversation about the cows and not waste the town's resources? Dina's team talking about the cows over and over and not having a meeting? To be honest, that, the town could have spent all that time and energy alerting the community properly, which goes into my next point, the notice of inclusion of Site H. It's been extremely frustrating how and when the community found out about Site H. Thank God for the ARC. Why weren't the neighboring communities given a reasonable amount of time to participate and voice their concerns? The April 29th House, Open House was way too late to even raise substantial issues due to the town's penalty deadlines. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm James Massey Kim. I'm Cynthia's husband. I think everyone's addressed the issues about, you know, drainage, fire, bicycle lanes, turnaways, turnarounds. I just wanted to talk about the safety and accessibility. I think everyone's talked about it. Safety is the biggest of my concern. There's a lot of children in the area, there's a lot of bicyclists, but, you know, I want to direct attention to Mr. Crandall during an ongoing boundary dispute. He tried to establish an easement with one of the Trinidad, Trinidad Drive neighbors so that his kids can access Paradise K, avoiding Paradise Drive. I think that's pretty important. Clearly, Mr. Crandall shares the same sentiment in the safety in regards to his children, right? Secondly, there's an ongoing boundary dispute. There's been, you know, multiple homeowners.
I will ask you to keep comments specific to the issue before us and just.
Yep. So, I'm going, I'm going to that.
And not, not personal, because to be honest with you, it's not persuasive or compelling.
Yep, yep.
Not, not, and maybe not relevant.
Yep. So, it is relevant because, you know, for the record, I'd like to know which property line Mr. Crandall is claiming or is including for the development. So, we're having, you know, a development, but there's a boundary issue. So, there's no resolution. What property line is, you know, submitted to the town for development? So, those are the two things that I wanted to say.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Anthony Vidergauz and I'm a, I'm on Paradise Drive or actually just above Paradise Drive overlooking the K. I haven't got a lot to add other than to echo every statement opposing what is contemplated by this action. It seems to me that they're two very viable alternatives with unwilling owners in terms of selling their properties. And instead, we're going to the most unsightly, frankly insane, situation to build 93 units for all the reasons you've heard today on Paradise Drive, but we have a very willing owner. So, that is no good reason, in my respectful opinion, to go and build and ruin a neighborhood that is loved and adored by all of us. The safety issues, the environmental issues, and all the other issues are valid, they're relevant, and should not be allowed. Thanks very much.
Before you leave, do you mind repeating your last name, just so we have the spell it out?
You will have, you will have me spell it. It's V-I-D-E-R-G-A-U-Z.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good job. Hi there.
Hi. My name is Kevin Louie. I live at 4535 Paradise Drive. I just want to say that I'm impressed with the passion of my fellow Tiburonians, if there is such a word. And I think you're in the business of solving problems, not just listening to our concerns. And I think that Mr. Chan has really articulated quite well options for your commission to adopt and consider. Finding a willing owner in an area that can meet your needs is certainly worth consideration. And so, at the end of the day, it's about solving a problem. I think we all have heard our concerns. I have nothing else to add, but please look at other sites before you look at Site H.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else who wishes to speak? Okay, so, Mary.
Chair, if I may interrupt, if we could just close the public hearing.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was actually, yes. I was just about to do that.
Perfect.
So, we'll close the public hearing. What that means is we, we, there won't be an opportunity for public comment. We will now hear from staff who will address questions that we have that have come up and I've been keeping track. And then we'll return it to the commission for deliberation and discussion. Okay, so, I have a number of questions that have come out of discussion that, some that I just noted down that I have myself and I imagine other commissioners do as well. So, why don't, Commissioner Mary, I'm happy to have you start while I organize my notes a bit.
Yeah, sure. So, first of all, thank you so much to come here tonight, especially in a Warriors game and talk about the concerns here and we've also, we've also read your letters as well. So, to staff, okay, I mean, there's a number of things that have been raised here that I think, at least on my side, it needs some clarification. I have nothing else to add, but please look at other sites before you look at site H.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to speak? Okay. So, Mary.
Chair, if I may interrupt, if we could just close the public hearing.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was actually, yes. I was just about to do that.
Perfect.
So we'll close the public hearing. What that means is there won't be an opportunity for public comment. We will now hear from staff, who will address questions that we have, that have come up, and I've been keeping track. And then we'll return it to the commission for deliberation and discussion. Okay. So I have a number of questions that have come out of discussion, some that I just noted down that I have myself, and I imagine other commissioners do as well. So why don't Commissioner Mayor, I'm happy to have you start while I organize my notes.
Yeah, sure. So first of all, thank you so much to come here tonight, especially in a Warriors game, and talk about the concerns here. And we've also read your letters as well. So to staff, okay, I mean, there's a number of things that have been raised here that I think, at least on my side, need some clarification. I'll start with a few, and then we can, you know, I'll give it to my fellow commissioners. So first of all, can you explain the process and the fact that initially this area was zoned for essentially four units? And obviously, the proposal here is for much more. And what has staff done in terms of looking on the environmental impact of that change? So that's the first thing. And I think that there's many, many sub-units that come into that. There's the fire issue. There's the drainage issue. There is the safety issue. So why don't we start from there? Because I think that will provide, I think, further, you know, further questions, I think, for all of us.
So the current zoning on that site is RPD, which allows one unit per acre. So you would be looking at 10 units. We evaluated, isn't it one unit per acre? Yeah, it's RPD. And the way in which we did evaluate it, looking at the proposed, what we call R-3-10, which allows for 10 to 12.4 units per acre, and that is because we have to put a buffer in there. So it's a minimum of 10 units per acre, which looks at a realistic development of 93. So we did evaluate this as part of the EIR when we looked at, and I'll make sure that Christina Irwin also agrees with me. We looked at this throughout the document for the safety with respect to mobility. We looked at the environmental concerns. So I wonder if you wanted to address that further, Christina, for that piece, and then we can go on to the other questions. So it's all at one time, and then we'll see if we answered your question.
Actually, Christina, just something I think will be important, is an overarching question, is when you say we evaluated it as part of the EIR, this is a programmatic EIR that's looking at the general plan, it's broad and general, versus a project, development project EIR, a specific application for a specific project in that EIR. What is the difference between, what does that mean?
Yeah, Commissioners, thank you for your questions. You are correct, Commissioner Williams. The EIR evaluated the totality of the development proposed under the general plan. That looks at carrying capacity, traffic concerns, utilities, capacity at a broad, high level. It is what we call a program EIR. It really looks at a very high level, at a plan level, what the environmental impacts of development, of the totality of the general plan is. A project EIR is typically prepared when there is a development proposal for a particular site, when there are specifics known about a particular site, when site planning or engineering have gone into a particular project. And those effects are evaluated kind of on a case-by-case basis when project applications come in. So when we talk about whether or not site H has been evaluated in the EIR, the answer is yes, at that high level, looking at 93 units per acre in the location, excuse me, 93 units total, in the location that it was identified. So we did not go do a site-specific analysis of that site or any other of the housing opportunity sites to look at design, layout, or any of the other issues that have been brought up tonight. We looked at the general plan holistically, and the environmental analysis looked at all of those cumulative impacts of developing the general plan as proposed.
But does the state look at this when we apply to this, or they don't care?
I'm sorry, I don't understand-
Is the state, I mean, because I think one of the issues here is like, you know, we could decide to rezone anything and decide we're putting 100 units there. We know that it's never going to pass on a project basis because of 100 different reasons, but it checks off the box that we met the quota. And if the state's okay with that, great, but we know those 100 units will never get built because the project wouldn't get approved. So the question is, is the state viewing it the same way that, looking at the totality of the program, where they're going to come back potentially and say, you know what, this site, there's no way 83 units could ever pass a EIR on a project basis? So I guess I think that's kind of the question, and to address some of the, obviously, the neighbors' concerns on this.
If I may, Vice Chair, and then we can have, you know, others join in as well. As was stated, this is a programmatic EIR. The item before you for consideration tonight is the general plan. So we've included a programmatic EIR to analyze the impacts of that general plan. HCD will look at your housing element, and they will look at feasibility of site development at a relatively high level, I would say, and Ms. Irwin can correct me if I'm wrong about that. So sites are analyzed to look at development constraints and the feasibility of development on those sites. With respect to a project itself, if a project is submitted for development on this site, site H, that site will be analyzed to determine if additional SEQA analysis is required. You will look at the general plan EIR, look at what it analyzed, and determine if that site, the development that's proposed on that site, is covered by that EIR, or if additional SEQA work needs to be done. Perhaps an addendum to the EIR, or tearing off the EIR, or another SEQA document may be necessary. So this isn't the end of SEQA. It's SEQA at a programmatic level, and then additional SEQA work may be required. And while I'm speaking, I wanted to address one more issue that I thought I heard in your initial question, which was existing zoning and what is the general plan, or what is the housing element analyzing? So the existing zoning, as you heard, is one unit per acre for this site. But the housing element is proposing a zoning amendment that would change that, as your community development director indicated, to allow the 10 units per acre. And that is something that will be brought forth to you. I heard a question from the public asking about when that zoning change would be brought forward, and I believe it's coming to you in two weeks for consideration. On the 24th, the planning commission will hear the proposed zoning changes that are necessary-
Excuse me, I'm so sorry. I'm going to have to ask people to stop talking because it's hard to hear, and it's important that we hear these answers.
So if I may, so an item will be brought forth to the planning commission for consideration and recommendation to the town council on the amendments to the zoning ordinance that are necessary to have the development capacity that's identified in your housing element.
Okay, great. Thank you. Those were questions that Mr. Goulding had raised, and that Commissioner Mayor has raised. Yes, continue.
Go ahead. Well, I have other questions, but why don't Commissioner DeFever, I mean, we all have questions, I think.
I'd like to piggyback on that so that we're still on the same subject. So if that were to come in front of us in a couple of weeks, a couple of months, and we decide there's just no way, given all of the things that we know about that site, that maybe it's not suitable, what would happen to our submission of our general plan? Are we going to need to amend that, to adapt to us not changing the zoning? How does this process work?
Well, if we can talk about it at a high level.
Yeah, of course.
So once your housing element is adopted, and you have projected capacity for your properties that are identified on your housing sites inventory list, this is back to the no-net-loss question that you were asking earlier. If those densities or developments are changed, the development capacity is changed in any respect, including through whatever zoning designation is given to that property, other sites would have to be identified to provide the capacity that's required to meet your arena.
Thank you. I think that's very helpful, because I'm hearing from many people here today is, this has happened too fast. You know, I just want to echo that I'm hearing that. This probably, Dina can answer this question, whether noticing was even required, because it's not an actual application for a project. That would be a procedural element that I actually would agree with you all. There should have been a notice, but I don't think it's required.
It's not.
It's not required, and maybe that's something the government needs to change. I think that was inappropriate.
If I may, Commissioner DeFever, just to fully respond to that question.
Yeah.
Individualized mail notice to the people who have spoken tonight was not required. However, the town did comply with all the published notice requirements, including, you know, publication of the housing element before it was sent to the state for the 30-day review period, and then again, as it was revised for the additional seven-day periods for comment. I understand that's not the issue that's being raised by the speakers tonight, but it is, in fact, the case that the town did comply with all the legal requirements to notice this item.
Yes. Thank you for that clarification. As planning commissioners for many years now, all three of us are aware that you're very good with noticing requirements. The town never sets a false foot with that. They follow the noticing requirements very carefully.
There also are enough lawyers on the commission to know that legal notice requirements are very different from, and often don't feel satisfying.
Yeah, we totally understand and appreciate the flaws in sometimes in the process. So thank you for that. It's hard for us to wrap our heads around exactly what the process will look like going forward. I think it, well, my commentary is held till later, but I think that's an excellent point for us to raise, even at this part in the discussion and questions.
Well, I think you really touched upon an important question, too, which is just our timeline.
Yeah.
What is our, what are you up against as a staff from a timing perspective and a state compliance perspective?
So we are on a pretty tight timeline, as you might imagine. We need or must adopt our general plan and certify our EIR by May 31st. Part of what we, I guess I could backtrack it by saying, the best way in which we would have done this would have been in January, in order to give us three years to do the rezoning. Currently, what happened is, because we were delayed in adopting both the general plan and certifying the EIR, we're now looking at a six-month time period to adopt the zoning ordinance to meet the state mandates. So, and to avoid the builder's remedy, as the town attorney had talked about before. And so right now, our schedule is a bit compressed, as I've told you, which is, we are scheduled, depending on what happens tonight, to take your recommendation to the town council on the 22nd of this month at a special meeting. And then we are also, we've kind of bifurcated the process, which is, we are taking the general plan and the EIR to the town council first, and then we're bringing the zoning ordinance amendments to you on the 24th of May, and then to the council in June. I believe it's the 7th is the first reading of that ordinance. So we need to wrap that all up in June so that we can make sure that our zoning is consistent with, or the general plan complies with the zoning, and the zoning is consistent with the general plan. So that's sort of where we are in a schedule basis, and why we're somewhat constrained, because we do have these state mandates, and we don't want to put us at risk where there could be a builder's remedy project that comes in, that we don't have a way in which to review it and make sure it meets standards.
In a builder's remedy project, where might that appear? Like, where in the town? Does that apply across the town to any developable parcel of, how would that manifest itself?
Excuse me, I missed the first part of your question.
The builder's remedy. I'm trying to just, from a layperson, what does that look like? What places are vulnerable? What sites are vulnerable? What is that? I mean, that's town-wide. That impacts everyone here? That impacts other people who aren't here?
I'm going to let-
I am trying to assess risk, because it's really important to hear from people who are directly impacted, feel that they will be directly impacted by a particular component of the plan. We're looking at a very large general plan that affects everybody in the town. And so, and we're looking at consequences of not meeting state law. This is not, this isn't something that the town staff has just decided to do. This is meeting state law. So I want to understand the risk to all of us in the community if we don't do, if we don't make a decision, if we punt hard decisions.
And Chair Williams, members of the commission, I'd like to give you a really thorough answer to that. So if you'll give me a minute to pull up my notes, I can give you a very specific answer to that question.
Yeah, that would be really helpful. Yeah, ask other questions.
Yeah, I have a follow-up. So can you remind me what, how many units were considering with the fourth story in downtown? If we were to do a fourth story?
So we were looking at 40 to 45 units an acre. I don't recall off the top of my head how many additional units that is. I'd have to go through my notes and to determine that.
So would it meet, I guess, would it meet the 93 units, or no? The 93 units-
I believe it does.
It does?
So I'm- But I'm going to check right now.
Just to clarify that issue, so, but town council, town council had that option and decided not to? Or is it because we got the feedback from the state that we had to spread it out, I guess?
So there are a couple of things here. There is also the whole issue of this SB9 site. So before we say you could absolutely meet it, I want to make sure we look at those numbers, because remember, we had a great deal of numbers for the SB9, as well as the density in downtown, minus the site H. So I would not say that it would meet it absolutely. I think there's a lot, there's also the SB9 sites. So if you give us a minute, maybe we should take a break for a minute.
Absolutely. Yeah, see, in fact, that's actually a good to take a five-minute break for folks who need to go to the bathroom. I think this is really important analysis to do, so I want to give staff time to do this.
Okay.
Five minutes.
Five minutes. Thank you so much for coming back to the, most of you have come back. Some of you have probably decided you've heard the highlights. So, we will resume and hear from staff. You've been doing some work.
If I may, Chair Williams, members of the commission, so you had asked me about what sites would the builder's remedy apply to? And I don't have the, you know, specific sites in Tiburon to identify, but I can tell you that the builder's remedy is part of the Housing Accountability Act. It applies to a project that includes 20% affordable housing for lower-income households or 100% of units affordable to moderate-income households. And that project cannot be denied on the basis, on the basis that, it cannot be denied on any site designated in any element of the general plan for residential use or commercial use if residential uses are permitted or commercially, or conditionally permitted. So, you cannot say that it's not zoned appropriately if it's identified in any portion of your general plan for those uses.
And that's, excuse me, I'm sorry. That's the current general plan.
Correct.
Because we haven't adopted a new one, so that's the current, anything that is zoned for residential, anything, is subject to the builder's remedy across Tiburon.
If it's, if it includes the appropriate affordability.
If it includes a certain percentage of the required housing, either low or moderate, 20% or 100%.
And it's a site designated in any element of the general plan for residential use or commercial use if residential uses are permitted or conditionally permitted.
So, that's basically any property within the residentially-zoned portion of Tiburon proper. I mean, Tiburon, not proper, Tiburon, within the boundaries, anywhere. Okay. I had some questions on-
Wait, the, what, on the other?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, you were doing the assessment.
The downtown?
Are you ready for that update?
Okay, so if we rezoned all of the sites, Sites 1 through 9, except for the Reed School site, which is-
Is there a way to show us that?
I don't have a way.
Wait, 1 through 9, but that-
Except for the Reed School, that would yield an additional 87 units.
87?
Wait a minute, is that the, 1 through 9 doesn't include the Cove or the Baptist Church, right?
No, no, we're not including the Cove or the Baptist Church.
Okay. And 1 through 9 is all basically largely downtown, if I recall?
It's mostly downtown. It's not, yeah, and it also would include like the Woodlands Market, all of the properties on, you know, from Town Hall down to Beach Road and the other one on the other side of Beach Road, so Chase Bank, the Bank of America site, the CVS site, the parking lots before that.
And it would be a fourth, fourth?
Four stories.
And-
87 units, you said.
Also, the parcels at Mar West and Tiburon Boulevard that are currently off, the three office buildings, those would be four stories as well.
And those are included within the 87, the 87 includes those?
That would, that would get us, yield us 87 units.
So, we would be short by six, right? If I'm doing my math.
Probably could, you know, because there's different income categories, we could probably fudge those numbers and get us there.
Okay.
Fudge, yeah, that's a technical word.
I guess one, one-
I think we know what you, what you-
Yeah, yeah, we understand. And just one question related to that, and then I can turn it back to Chair Williams. The, how, I'm not sure if the word "easy" is the right word, but the fact that there's a homeowner, an hacienda, that's interested in, in having units on his property and it's a 27-acre property, what, I guess, have we explored that? Has the town looked at that? If yes, no, what is the process? Can you just comment on that?
So, I quickly looked at Marin maps while we've been here based on the APN that I was given. I also looked at my email to see if I've ever had any exchange. Until today, I haven't had an email exchange. So, that property, based on that APN, is in the county and not in the town. So, that piece of property, we obviously could not consider, and it might have been why.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. No, please.
Wait, wait, so, okay.
I'm just telling you, based on what I looked at, based on the APN that was told to us.
Right, thank you, yes.
I also looked at another site, just so you know, on Trestle Glen. There was another site, I can't remember how many acres it was. It's a landslide area. It's not been developed for that particular reason. So, we did go through, just so everybody knows, not, and I'm not, I'm just trying to let you know that I didn't just willy-willy, you know, go, oop, down here. We went through and we looked at every single vacant lot in town. We looked at it for, for development. We looked at it for SB9 sites. We looked at them for ADUs. We did calculations on that. So, for the past year at least, I've been working with our consultants to go through every single site possible because finding 639 units, as you might imagine, is not an easy task. And so, we did go through this process. So, I don't want anybody to think that we didn't look at that. So, I was surprised to see this site, so we did go look. I'm happy to look further into it. I responded to the gentleman on the email, email just around us, telling me, can you please provide me that APN number so I can double-check? So, if he writes back to me during this hearing, I'll let you know.
Okay, great, thank you. That's, thanks for your clarification.
Okay, yeah, thank you. So, Commissioner DePevere, did you have questions?
Yeah, go ahead, I do, but go ahead.
Okay, yeah, so I was wondering, just, these are things that have come up through the comments, and some of, some of them, I just, I think, just to clarify on, you know, we've talked a lot about the Baptist Church site and the Cove, and it's, and my understanding is that we cannot offer those up as sites. They will not be accepted by the state, and we can't rezone something, even, so some people have suggested rezone even if the property owner's not willing to develop. Is, that can't be done. Is that something that can be done?
So, so we could rezone it, we just can't count those units, right?
Can't count those units.
And so, it doesn't really work for us. And because the individual, I mean, let's, let's go further into this. In those two instances, we received a letter from those property owners saying, we are not interested in rezoning, we are not interested in development at this property, you know? And so, that could lead to a rejection by the state. We can't include it because the state will not allow us to. And one of the things that's interesting is that if we have a property owner that actually writes and tells us they don't want it, the state is included in that and we can't include it. So, it, you know, it's, it's not something we can really consider for, for rezoning at this particular time.
So, to the, kind of to the point about being, trying to find solutions, that's just not a viable solution.
Those are not viable locations.
Excuse me, no.
Excuse me, sir.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Sir.
This is really- This is so, excuse me, this is very, no.
Sorry, I can't sit here while that happens.
No, I think that it's, it's very disrespectful and it's not appropriate in this context. I've never, in eight years on the Planning Commission, I've never experienced anything like this.
I'm sorry, I haven't experienced this kind of thing.
This is eight years and the staff has worked very hard, and I think they're entitled to some respect. Well, we have provided for public comment emails. You've written a long letter, you've spoken tonight. Yeah, I don't think this is helping your cause.
You know what, the cause exists outside of me. It's not my cause.
Okay, let's continue. So, where, where were you?
Chair Williams, I think that your Community Development Director answered the question that you posed, which is two-part, right? Inclusion of sites where owners have indicated that they are not at all interested in redeveloping their property. And we talked about this earlier, that HCD looks at the feasibility of development of sites, and if you have a property owner who's indicated that they are not interested in redeveloping the site, HCD will not consider that site to be feasible for redevelopment in the case that they're already improved.
So, we're back, we'd just be right where we are now in terms of not having that site available.
Those sites would not be considered adequate sites to, to include in your housing inventory to meet your RENA. The zoning question's a different question, and it is separate, as the commenter indicated and as the commission has indicated, it's separate from the housing element, but it doesn't solve your housing element sites inventory RENA capacity issue.
Right. Now, does it address the issue where if the property owner changed their mind, is it proactive in a way that is helpful within the eight-year period?
So, let's set aside the housing element and what you need to accommodate in your housing element to meet your RENA. Aside from that, if sites are developed during the planning period for housing that weren't included in your housing element, those still count as sites that you report in your annual report to HCD, and they count towards your RENA. They just weren't identified on the housing sites inventory. So, say a property changes hands, someone changes their mind, the appropriate zoning is in place, or somebody requests that the town consider, you know, a modification to the development requirements on that property, and that property actually develops with housing units during the eight-year planning cycle, then those units count towards your RENA. But we can't count them in your housing element.
Okay. There's been a suggestion about conditionally zoning Site H. I don't know if you've seen that in the comments, and I'm curious as to that viability of that proposal.
Chair Williams, I'd have to look into more about what is meant by conditional zoning. It's not a term that I'm familiar with, but I'm happy to review the correspondence and give you a more informed decision. I mean, properties are zoned, you know, sometimes there's overlays, sometimes there's other opportunities for different types of development, but they're still in your zoning.
Did we determine a sense of whether if this Planning Commission decided it would be better to move the additional units to, back to downtown where they were originally suggested, whether that would still run afoul of HCD because then it's too concentrated?
I think that is our concern, that HCD would look at that as a concentration of units. And if the commission wanted to make that recommendation to the council, you can, you know, of course, ultimately, the council's going to adopt the general plan and, including the housing element.
So, but, follow-up to Commissioner DePevere, I think that's an important point. If the, what happens if the state, if you submit now, by May 25th, the state says no, then what?
So, the process is, once the housing element is adopted, it'll be sent up to HCD and reviewed, the revisions will be reviewed to see if HCD believes that the housing element substantially complies with housing element law. If they do not believe that, we'll get another comment letter back from them indicating where they think the deficiencies are.
And in that period, then we have the building's remedy, basically, where after the May 25th or not?
May 31st.
Or, or May, May 31st?
End of the month.
So, to be, to be clear, the builder's remedy applied to the statutory deadline to adopt the housing element, which for the Northern Bay Area, the Bay Area jurisdictions, that was January 31st, 2023. There's this so-called grace period that once you've adopted your housing element, if it's sort of found to be substantially compliant by HCD, I believe it's by May 31st, then you have three years to do any rezonings in order to accommodate your RENA. If you do not have your element adopted and certified by HCD by that May 31st timeline, then you only have one year from the statutory deadline to adopt your housing element to get your zoning in place. So, that's what your Community Development Director indicated. You basically have six months now to get your zoning in place because that timeframe runs on January 31st, 2024. So, I know there was another part to your question that I got lost in my own.
No, so the, so just to, just to clarify it, so, I mean, the town will adopt, or, excuse me, I'm not speaking on behalf of town council, but something will be adopted by town council in a couple of weeks. So, there will be an adoption of some housing element.
The town, the town council will be presented with the housing, the housing element for adoption.
Assuming they adopt something, the state could approve or not approve, right? And then, there is, based on their answer, depends whether there's a six months or a two and a half years left, or, just wanted to get a, understand kind of what.
So, let's put all those timelines I, I mentioned aside. The process will be, once the town of Tiburon adopts its housing element, we're going to send it up to HCD. And your staff has been, and consultants have been in communications with HCD about the proposed changes, so they can speak to how those conversations have gone. But the process will be Planning Commission recommendation, town council action, send it off to HCD. That triggers another 60-day review period by HCD, and they will either send you a letter that I have anecdotally or short-circuited, said, called it the golden ticket letter, where you've been told that you substantially, in HCD's opinion, you substantially comply with housing element law. If you get that, then you're done. If you get a letter from HCD that says, hey, we think you missed the boat on this, or we have additional revisions that we'd like to see to this or initial analysis, then you, we'll go through the same process. Staff will work with the consultant team to analyze those comments, determine what, if any, revisions can be made, and then we would be back going through this process.
Okay, thank you.
So, okay, there's still confusion in my mind because I, I'm, I'm in that time until we've gotten the stamp of approval from HCD, we're subject to the builder's remedy.
So, there is a provision in housing element law that allows the town council to adopt the housing element and make findings that substantially complies with housing element law, which is what is being proposed for what you have in front of you tonight and what the town council will be considering on the 22nd. So, that self-certification stops the builder's remedies clock, if you will. I will tell you, there's a little bit of a difference of legal opinion on that and potentially some difference of opinion, there's a difference of legal opinion about that.
Between the state and the jurisdiction?
Between, you know, other types of housing, nonprofit housing advocates and, you know, potentially HCD, but the-
It's not necessarily a certainty, but that's staff, town, the town attorneys.
So, if the city, if the town were to receive a builder's remedy project after the town had adopted the housing element, but prior to certification by HCD, there would be an argument about that self-certification.
Yeah, and they're, just to clarify, there could be many reasons why the state could come back and not agree on the general plan. It doesn't have to be specifically-
So, the state only reviews your housing element, not the entirety of your general plan, and I would let your, your staff and your consultant team speak to how their communications with HCD have been going on the revisions that are being proposed.
Okay, great, thanks.
There has been a lot of back and forth, so we have winnowing down the issues here.
So, we have gone, so this is our second round. We're quite friendly with-
We're quite friendly with the HCD at this point. Ms. O'Rourke and I have met twice since the last submittal. I believe we have answered all of their questions. And I think we are hopefully going to get our golden ticket once we send it up there. I think this time it was pretty productive in both of our meetings so that we got to understand exactly what they wanted. And in fact, they provided us with examples of what they wanted. So maybe I'm stupidly optimistic, but I think we are pretty close to done on this. So I think that the time period for us is to make sure that we get this into HCD, seven days. We have to post it for seven more days after a decision is made, and then we'll send it up to HCD. Unless we've already put it out there, does that count? Okay, so you've already, it's already on the website. So as soon as a decision is made, we'll send it to HCD and then we'll await their response.
And, Dina, when you say you're feeling pretty optimistic, you know, cautiously optimistic, is that assuming that we were to just embrace kind of what's been presented, the resolution?
Yes, so what they provided to us as a response is based on what we've submitted. And that would be the inclusion of all the sites that we submitted.
And so that, so that you're not speaking to, if we were to say, to kind of the analysis that we just did tonight about adding?
I think that would be a change that we would have to go forward with, with HCD. And I wouldn't feel.
We just don't know.
I don't know, I don't know, so.
We just don't know what they'll say.
I don't know.
Okay. Are there any questions? We've been talking a lot about Site H, I have a question about the general plan, which is also before us tonight. And I know, I believe Commissioner DeFever, you may have additional questions.
I definitely have questions about the general plan. Most of them relating back to things we've been discussing now. Because since the last time our Planning Commission saw the general plan, there are a lot of new housing element clauses in there. And I suspect that they are being required by the state. But I want to double-check, you know, which ones are and what might have been added by the town. And maybe without diving into detail, you could just tell me that if you have an easy way to walk us through that.
I'm not sure I understand exactly what you're talking about.
Okay, I can give you examples for certain. Some of them relate to requirements for the town to, here, I could pull up my, I'll pull up my notes. For example, community outreach when implementing housing element programs, coordinate with local businesses, housing advocacy groups, et cetera, et cetera. And there's a clause on, it looks like basically rent control, that we are going to coordinate on creating our own rent control.
The tenant protection strategies. So, yes, so all of those are, came out of the housing element update process?
Okay, yeah, because I, I mean, maybe I'm wrong and my fellow commissioners remember better than I do, but I don't remember seeing those the first time that we went through the general plan. And I suspected they're coming from required housing.
They're in the housing element, right? So we've duplicated the goals, policies, and programs that are in the housing element and inserted them into the main document of the general plan with a reference to, the rest of the housing element will be in an appendix because it just goes on for hundreds of pages and a lot of detailed analysis.
Yeah, well, thank you for the way that you presented it. It's very clear and easy to read through. I just was, I guess, surprised by some of them because I hadn't seen them before. Yeah, I mean, if I go through them all in detail, it will take a very long time. But another one that jumped out at me was Program H-II, Rezone Housing Opportunity Sites. It says, I wanted to know if this one was required and where it came from because it's, it sounds like it might be required. And it's requiring minimum densities from a table that cited to. It's saying that we have to permit owner occupied and rental multifamily uses by right pursuant to a government code. And I just don't remember seeing this one either. And I'm not clear on exactly what we're being asked to do here.
Yeah, again, those are all, those are all in the housing element. So when it's talking about the rezoning, those are the sites that we're rezoning. So we're creating a new mixed-use district, for example, downtown. So it's to rezone sites that are currently neighborhood commercial to this new mixed-use district. And there are some that are required to be, we have to allow 100% residential use on those sites. We have to have minimum density, so the density range is 30 to 35 units an acre. But there will be a required minimum of 30 units an acre. And then the by right simply means that it has to, we have to use objective design and development standards when reviewing and approving that, those developments.
Okay, that is specifically for what we're discussing, thank you, that does help. I also, just after that, there's Program H-KK on the Reed School site. I was just curious as to how this, I guess the answer is the same thing. How did this end up in the general plan? Because the general plan is for, you know, our planning for 20 years. And suddenly there's something very specific in here about the Reed School site. I don't believe it belongs in here personally, but maybe we're being forced by the housing.
Well, again, so the housing element is a chapter, is an element of the general plan. It's much more detailed and the programs are much more detailed than everything else, really, that's in the general plan. And we've just duplicated them that are in the housing element and brought them forward into the main body of the general plan so that, you know, for ease of staff and the public's use, they'll know that they're there. There's more detail in the housing element because that's where we identify the financing and who's responsible and exactly what the timeline is and what the objectives, the quantified objectives are. Those are all things that are required by HCD that we do. The Reed School site, you know, that became, it's just through the process of working with HCD, they wanted some assurances that this site would actually get developed. So then that's why we put in there that if it, if for some reason the school district decides not to develop housing on that site, then the town will identify another site to make up for that site. So, so yes, they are very detailed now in the general plan.
And Commissioner DeFever, to your point about the time period of the general plan being 20 years and, you know, these elements or these programs being very specific, your housing element is, of course, reviewed more often than the other chapters of your general plan every eight years.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I mean, this is very different from the previous general plan. So I just wanted to make sure I understood why things were placed where they were placed. And that's, that's very helpful, thank you.
Any other?
Probably, but I need to scroll a little bit, so if you have other questions.
I actually had one question on the previous Paradise Drive. One of the comments here on these, on this border dispute issue or not, or the fact that there is a border dispute on this property. And just to understand that issue, how does that fit the fact that the state will look at this and say, maybe there's a border dispute? And how do these units fit that?
Or maybe another way to ask the question is, how is the property identified for purposes of the list that goes to HCD? They might not need that level of detail.
Chair Williams, members of the commission, if I can start and then turn it over if more detail is needed. So the site that is included in your housing element as Site H, the boundaries of that site were taken from assessor's parcel information. So boundary disputes that have not been resolved are not reflected in those documents.
Okay.
I had a question about, so it relates to the general plan. Well, actually, it's sort of a question, at least initially, for maybe the EIR consultant. I definitely understand the scope of the EIR and how it's, you know, I'm more familiar with Project EIRs that go way deep into the weeds on all of, many of the issues that were brought up tonight. This one's a little different. And so some of the comments that were submitted were really good comments. They might not have been sort of as relevant to the scope of the EIR, this DEIR, I should say. And so you, it would acknowledge that it doesn't go to the sufficiency of the EIR or any deficiencies in the EIR itself. But the comment has been noted and shared with decision-makers. And some of those comments were actually related to the general plan. So they were comments about, I think this should, the general plan should be revised in this way or that way. And I just, I've made an assumption that I want to test. And my assumption is that, because this has been, this has been going on for years. It has been a very intensive process with a lot of people looking at comments and analyzing them. And there weren't many, I should say. Most of the comments that came in were specific to Site H or, you know, the housing element. But there were some that related more broadly to the general plan. And so to give an example, the one I'm thinking of is the LAFCO proposals, proposed edits. And so, sorry, I'm being a little bit, I'm not sure where to direct the question. Where, so I understand that the EIR consultant said, not, thank you for submitting, no revisions to the EIR are required, but we've, I've shared this with everyone else. Were those comments assessed, analyzed, incorporated if relevant, not incorporated if not relevant, or if not consistent with town policy?
We did propose edits to the policies in response to the LAFCO comments. Those are identified in the errata, that's in the end.
Oh, that's why I missed them.
In, it's there, at the end of the general plan. So it affected, I see, Program LU. And there's a, there's a couple of programs and a policy as well that that impacted.
Okay, thank you. So that answers the specific question as to LAFCO, but also my process question, which is just that you were, those were indeed assessed.
Yeah, so to follow up Chair Williams, LAFCO's letter did not address or comment on the adequacy of the EIR. As Ms. O'Rourke noted, it was purely about policy. Regarding your other question about programmatic analysis in the EIR, you're right in the sense that it is sometimes difficult to wrap our heads around an environmental analysis that looks at a plan. We look at carrying capacity, we look at, excuse me, individual sites for particular analyses. For instance, a traffic analysis, where would trips be generated from? Where are they going to is a good analysis. Many of the comment letters that are responded to in the final EIR, particularly regarding Site H, are slightly premature because they address the adequacy of a specific site and a specific site layout, of which is not part of the analysis in this general plan. Nor should it be at this point, as there's no application proposed. And the general plan is looking at a town-wide scope as opposed to individual sites. So the same goes not only for Site H, but any other site that was identified. No site-specific analysis has been done for any of those. And it is possible that when development proposals come before the town, that additional SEQA may be required. There's a series of steps that staff will go through to determine that based, you know, consistent with state law and the proper determination. And then the next process steps will then subsequently be taken.
And other forms of review among commissions and design review boards and that sort of thing. I mean, there's a whole, that's, that's part of the typical process that we see when something specific comes before us.
Correct.
Just one way that was, I read in, in the, in the materials is that the reason this type of, this program EIR, it's very speculative. You can't, you can't even look into impacts of something that is not, does not exist.
Yeah, California law, through the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, actually is very clear that you cannot speculate about things that may or may not happen. You are required to look at reasonably foreseeable effects, which is what we have done by identifying particular sites, densities for each of those sites. That is what is known about implementation of the general plan. Anything beyond that would be speculative in nature, which is why when a particular development proposal comes forward, it is then evaluated against the adequacy of the general plan and against a whole other number of documents, regulatory policies that the town has in place.
Okay, thank you so much, that's so illuminating. Okay. I think, those are my burning questions. Did that give you enough time to do your scrolling?
I found another one and I lost it again because I got on the track of what you were talking about. One second. Here we go, Program H-MM, Supportive Housing. Could you enlighten me as to what supportive housing is?
H-MM?
Yeah, it's on the general plan, it's page 96 in your electronic version. Actually, it's also page 96 in the corner of the page.
So supportive housing is housing, it's generally housing for formerly homeless people. And it's supportive in that it provides supportive services to help those people. It might be mental health or substance abuse or job training, those kinds of services. And that, that is a requirement, the revised zoning code is state law. So we were just bringing the town zoning code into compliance with state law.
I would have assumed that now that I understand some of these other additions, thank you.
I'm starting to realize that anywhere the government code is specifically cited. And we had, you know, as was noted at the outset, we spent a lot of time working through the goals and objectives and policies early on and kind of helping to define those. And then just process-wise, I'm looking at the sort of equity goals. We had a separate commission, committee, commission formed to also look at that and weigh in on that. So this is a very collaborative effort. And you have had the exciting task of pulling it all together.
That's right. And the, yes, the Diversity Inclusion Task Force, Inclusion Task Force, did, over several meetings, look at that element. And there was also a subcommittee that was formed to fashion that element. And then they approved it and we just, we've included it as it was approved by the committee or the commission.
Great, thank you.
Yes, I also noticed a lot of additional promotions for art projects that we didn't see in our previous past.
From the Arts Commission?
And I'm assuming they're from the Arts Commission.
They are from the Heritage Arts Council, yes.
They were very active, there's a lot of nice little clauses in here to promote arts. I think that is all of my questions about the general plan. It looks very nice. You can tell a lot of work has gone through it since we've seen it, all in positive ways.
Is this, are you finished with questions?
On the general plan.
Because we can bring it back to discussion.
I think, I think on everything. Let me check a couple more things. I wish I could just memorize all my questions.
I have no, I have no more questions for staff.
Yeah, I think I've concluded mine.
Yeah, I think I am also good, one second. I already asked this one. Yes, I think so.
Okay, great, well then, I think, thank you so much for fielding our questions. And I think we'll bring it back to the commission to discuss and deliberate and make a decision. Who would like to go first? I've been turning to Commissioner Ramirez, you've been jumping at the chance.
All right, I guess I'll go first. So, first of all, I want to thank staff here for, this is, this is, just to get an idea, this is like a multi-year effort already to get to this stage. So this is an amazing amount of work. And a lot of thought process has been put onto this. And we've been involved in this process as well for many, many hearings. So I guess I'll just focus my comments on basically the issue of tonight. So I guess I'll just focus my comments on basically the issue of tonight, for the most part. I mean, I have, I have no problem with the general plan, so I'm perfectly content. I think that the changes that have been made since the last time we've seen, I think, are only, only for the better. So I, I'll just focus my comment on the housing element and relating basically to where we are here with the situation with, with Parcel H here. I mean, we're definitely in a, we're definitely in a tough spot here because the state's asking us for, you know, 639 units, when the last decade we'd had only 79. So just to put this perspective, this is, this is not an outcome that is good for any town, for any small town like Tiburon. And for better, for worse, clearly if the 639 units get built, this is not going to be a great outcome for the town. It's going to change the character of this town for, you know, I think for the worse because it's really, we're getting imposed on this, on this number. And there's a reason why there's so many towns in the state that have now been struggling with this state mandate, because it's negatively impacting many, many towns, and Tiburon, definitely. And, you know, and the other aspect is, most of these units are all being their own, most of these properties are owned by private land. So at the end of the day, it depends on the private property, whether the landowner wants to develop it or not, just because it's been designated, doesn't mean it's going to get built. You know, and just like in the previous cycle, there were 79 units designated, at the end there were built five or six. But it's, it's tough to predict what the future's going to look like, but that's just to put it someone's perspective. I think that the, the way I see it is that, look, the decision of the Planning Commission tonight is, is really, in a way, it's not final because there's a May 22 decision of Town Council. And I think part of the situation that we're in was because there was a Town Council decision to not go down the downtown route and actually go with the Paradise Drive route. And, you know, they, because, because the way these, this process works, it's not like we can consult with Town Council unofficially, that just doesn't work like that. It needs to be all in the public forum. So, so the only thing that we have is what was in the minutes and what was discussed there. But the way I see it tonight is that I, I definitely would like to recommend a housing element for Town Council to vote on, because I think that is the right thing, to get a housing element voted for by the May 25 deadline, so this, the town is compliant. Because there's too much risk for this town not to be compliant because of this building remedy. I mean, this, this can open up a Pandora box and expose the town for legally on lawsuits and also could potentially, you know, potentially there could be projects that could pop up in areas that we don't want even to pop up because we're exposed. But I do think that we, at least in my opinion, I did not hear tonight from staff that downtown is a no from, from the, from the, from the state. Therefore, I do think it is the more appropriate solution, at least for the short term. If we get the state to say no after we, if this is what we vote for, then it comes back in 90 days, and then the fallback, fortunately or unfortunately, will be probably Zone H. That's the way I see it. I mean, and because I think the town has done an amazing job in exploring all other opportunities, and the Cove and the Baptist Church and other are just not real viable options, and this is probably the only other option. However, given, given, yeah, given the situation here that we could go down the path and the applicant, excuse me, an application for this property could pop up in two years from now, and even if it's 20 units or 40 units, not the 83 units, but then gets shot down from an EIR perspective, because there is, there is many issues that have popped up tonight that are very, very valid, that could, that could, that could really limit the ability to develop it there, then we need to find these 20, 40 units instead of those units, or the 60 units, or those 80 units instead. And then where are we going to go? We're going to go back to downtown. You know, it is kind of where I feel that that's the, that's where we are. So it's hard to predict the future, and I'm not kind of speculating, but I think that I'm more on the side here to more recommend to Town Council to explore this fourth story again, see, and they had certain conclusions, why not? But I'm not completely convinced that the whole aspect of the Paradise Drive solution was really taken into as much consideration.
Thank you, thank you. Commissioner DeFever?
Well, that was pretty much most of what I was going to say. I would add, given your last statement, Commissioner, Vice Chair Ramirez, that I would urge the council to look more carefully at that location, and possibly urge the staff. If, if it comes back that Site H is still preferred by the housing authority, by HCD, you know, I would urge you to strongly assert to them that there's no, there's no public transportation over there. That doesn't make sense. Beyond the, the other, other roadblocks, roadblocks, no pun intended, that were, that were mentioned, that it would probably be very expensive and possibly not feasible to build so many units there. But the HCD is saying, Tiburon, you need to have 600 and something units because you have public transit access. Well, it's not on Paradise Drive, it's the ferry terminal that they're citing to on the other side. So I would add that context. If it gets to that point, I think that dialogue would need to be had with HCD to really, you know, we hear you, but the reason you want us to have that many units is because of this access to public transit. Well, that's on this side of the peninsula, it's not on the other side of the peninsula. So backing into what Commissioner Ramirez said, I agree. I think that we should recommend to the council to revisit the increased density downtown, where it makes more sense. And as you so rightly said, maybe it comes back to us anyway, and Site H is back on the, on the agenda. But also, I mean, we learned from the public tonight that there are other sites that might be possible that we didn't even completely know about because of the way that these, these regulations, these policies have been forced down from the state. It hasn't necessarily been the smoothest procedure. I think the people of the town and the county are more aware of what's going on. And I always, I always like to say, Tiburon is such a wonderful place because there's so many intelligent, creative people here. We figure it out. You know, maybe there are 93 jurisdictions that are having a hard time figuring out how to navigate this. We can do it. I have confidence. We're very creative. All that being said, we do need to be careful not to incite a builder's remedy or lawsuits from nonprofits, if we can try not to do that, because that hurts all of us as well. I think that's, that's all of my comments. The general plan looks wonderful. I really commend everyone who worked on it. It really is a piece of art, really. I'm very impressed. The last time we saw it, we made a lot of suggestions, and seeing them actually written out beautifully is wonderful to see. And it's been a long process, a lot of people have worked really hard. I guess that would really be the bulk of my comments. Yeah, Commissioner Ramirez already articulated very well what I was thinking. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I just, just to, the over, my overarching opinion is that I concur with my fellow commissioners, just to not leave anyone in suspense. I wanted to, first, I really wanted to acknowledge staff and the consultants, the whole team. It has, this has been an incredibly complex, challenging, demanding, physically, emotionally, mentally, it's been a big task for staff, and I think it's really important to acknowledge that hard work, because I believe they're working weekends and late into the evening, within a framework that is very challenging and new and complex legally, and has some very serious implications for everyone in the town. This is, there is a lot of, you know, it's really hard to be in the position of, you know, a commission, a council, I think especially a staff, that really has to answer to every individual citizen within the town. And each person has a strong feeling about where they live and how they experience Tiburon. And, and people work so hard to try to find the balance, and it's not always easy. And this is, this is a really good example of how it's actually almost impossible. There is no one who will, we're, this is definitely not going to make every single person happy, whatever happens over the next, you know, month here. And, but, I have all, so, so thank you so much. And the general, the general plan is so beautiful, the EIR is one of the nicest EIRs I've ever read. It's really clear and very user-friendly. So very, just impressed by the content, by the, the way it was presented to us.
She reads a lot of EIRs because, in her personal work as well, yeah. So that is a big compliment.
So it just, it was just to explain a very complex process, you know. I felt like I was a little scared at having so, so much voluminous material, and yet it was presented in a way that was actually digestible. I have always believed that the downtown area is, I know that there are a lot of people in town who don't share this opinion, and that was what the Town Council was responding to. A group just like this, who was saying, I don't want, it's going to impact me, it will impact me. So I don't know what the future holds. Those are the kinds of hard decisions that, you know, have, it's just trying to find the right balance, and sometimes it works better for people, and sometimes it doesn't. I just think that the downtown area is the place where there should be, we have believed as a commission that that's where the focus should be for so many reasons. There's, it's mixed use, it's vibrancy, it's economic vitality, it's safety, it's transportation, it's access, it just makes sense, you know? And it's underutilized, in my opinion. We've said that for years and years and years. Whereas Paradise, through commission work, I all, I really appreciate, and other work, I really appreciate the challenges of that area, and the passion of that community as well. It's, it just, it, but I also understand how we got here. I really understand how we got here, because we only have so many viable opportunities, and there's no, to me, it doesn't make sense for us to discuss sites that aren't viable, that aren't legal, that would be rejected. I just don't see the wisdom in that. And, but, so, you know, being long-winded, but I would recommend to the Town Council that they revisit the downtown sites of zoning and, and spend some time there. And it sort of feels like we're kicking the can down the road, but actually we're coming back to our original point of view.
I don't think we are, because some of that, look, the, just the process, look, the final, the final decision is by Town Council on May 22nd, no matter what we would have decided tonight. So just, that's how the process works. So, so that, in terms of adopting a general plan or housing element, and I think as a commission, we're all in agreement that we need to adopt a general plan.
Oh, definitely, that's such a good point, yeah.
Housing element to be compliant with the state. Now, whether the Town Council decides one avenue or another avenue, that's up to Town Council. We can provide our recommendation, and that's kind of our, our role here.
Yeah, yeah. And it's a really important point that you started with, which is, there's not an option to not pass a housing element, to not have a general plan. That opens up every individual within the town, and we have to think collectively about the overall impact. And, and, you know, it's going to, someone's going to have to sacrifice, or some, some folks may, may sacrifice more than others. But I actually think of the downtown, that just, that is an additive overall. So, so the, so we're not, obviously we have a difference, different from what's proposed. And I don't know if, we're making a recommendation, and so I don't know how that impacts the resolution that has been prepared.
You have two resolutions, right?
Correct. And Chair Williams, members of the commission, if I may. So there are two resolutions in your packet, and you're being asked to take two separate actions tonight.
On the EIR.
We would ask that you first consider the resolution in your packet, recommending that the Town Council certify the final EIR for the Town of Tiburon General Plan 2040, make SEQA findings a fact, and adopt a statement of overriding considerations, and adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. So that's the first resolution that's in your packet for consideration tonight.
So, understood. I'm just looking, so I'm looking at the statement of overriding considerations. I mean, we're, we're recommending something that's a different alternative that you rejected in the statement of overriding considerations, correct?
I think that Alternative 3 was not, it was determined not to be the preferred alternative, correct?
Right.
Yes. So if you would like to, if we can, if, maybe we can unpack this by coupling them back together. We'll pack it back and then unpack it again. So what I hear you saying is that the, the commission is considering the second resolution that you would be, and you will tell us what is correct and what is not correct about this. But what I've heard is that the consider, consideration of the second resolution, which asks the Planning Commission to make a recommendation to the Town Council to adopt the, it actually asks that you repeal, them to repeal the existing housing element, adopt the Tiburon General Plan 2040, which includes the 2023, 2031 housing element. So just to be clear, recommendation on the general plan includes the recommendation on the housing element. But what the commission has been discussing, and the three of you appeared to have reached consensus on, is that you would like the Town Council to, to consider revisiting the downtown sites that are included in Alternative 3. So if that's accurate, you could make a motion on the first resolution regarding certification of the EIR and ask the Town Council to consider Alternative 3. And that would coincide with what I'm hearing your motion is leaning towards on the general plan, which is that it would be to have the Town Council consider removing Site H and replacing it with the downtown sites that were previously considered and that are included in Alternative 3.
Yes, yes, that is correct. So, so the motion on the first resolution, and I just want to make sure I get the language right.
Is the certification of the EIR.
Is the certification of the EIR. But we are making a resolution to recommend that the Town Council, to recommend that the Town Council consider Alternative 3 as the preferred alternative. And that's the motion for a resolution recommending that the Town Council, before certifying the final EIR, consider Alternative 3 as the preferred alternative.
So if I may, again, so Section 4 of your first resolution, the resolution recommending certification of the EIR, includes Line 1, where you are recommending that the Town Council certify the final environmental impact report and adopt the SEQA findings of fact for General Plan 2040 as attached, as Exhibit A. We could add there something along the lines, and that the Town Council consider the adoption of Alternative 3, or something along those lines. And I'll look to your consultant team and staff to see if they have changes or suggestions.
Staff doesn't have any objections?
Yeah, we're waiting.
Sounds okay? Okay. I thought we were waiting for staff.
And so that language you had to recommend was, and consider finding that Alternative 3 is the preferred alternative? This is to, this is to number one at Section 4?
That, that's what I was hearing, where the commission was headed with that.
Yep, yep, yeah. Okay, so I, I will make the motion, or move, to adopt a resolution certifying the final EIR and adopting a SEQA findings of fact for the general plan 2040, attached as Exhibit A to the resolution, and recommend that the Town Council consider adoption of Alternative 3 as the preferred, Alternative 3 therein as the preferred alternative. That's the motion.
Was that worded correctly? Can I second that, and we're, we're satisfied with the wording?
I believe we have that, that wording.
Okay, I will make a second for that motion.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
For the record, Chair Williams, the motion carries three zero.
Motion carries three zero.
So now we have the general plan.
Yes, we have the second resolution which I have stolen from.
Chair Williams has absconded with my resolution.
And so that is a motion that we adopt the resolution of the, and that we recommend to the town council that they repeal the Tiburon 2015, 2023 housing element and adopt the Tiburon General Plan 2040, including the 2023, 2031 housing element, but substituting Site H with the downtown sites.
One through nine.
One through nine.
And including alternative three.
And including alternative three.
That's what she said originally.
So let's, let's see if we can pull that one into the resolution.
Do it again, okay.
The, the final, therefore be it further resolved clause on the last page of the resolution in your packet currently reads that the planning commission recommends that the town council repeal the Tiburon 2015, 23 housing element, adopt the Tiburon 2023, 2031 housing element and adopt general plan 2040. All of us understanding that the housing element is part of general plan 2040.
Right.
So I think, based on what the commission's input has been, you could modify that last be it resolved clause to read that the planning commission recommends that the town council repeal the existing housing, adopt the 2023.
Sorry, sorry, you have to slow down for me. Recommends that the town council appeals. Oh, you're just reading from the top.
I'm reading from the final page of your resolution.
Yeah, so, yeah, what's the additive, the language that we?
So, there, yeah, now we're at the cliffhanger. Adopt the Tiburon 2023, 2031 housing element, but consider replacing Site H with, and I need staff's help in clarifying which of those sites you're asking to be considered.
Well, I guess it's one through nine downtown.
So downtown, is that how they're identified in the housing element?
Higher, then it's higher density. Higher density sites, it's not one through nine, it's one, two, seven and nine.
And it's the sites that are identified in alternative three in the draft EIR? Is that accurate? Okay.
Oh, oh, that's my.
Do we need to add that language? I'll benefit.
So you could say that you are recommending that they remove Site H and, or recommending, considering the replacement of Site H with the sites identified in alternative three in the draft EIR. I believe what that does is it returns Site H to its existing density?
Of seven.
Of seven units. That doesn't need to be in your resolution.
Right, 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 okay.
It's seven, it's seven new units.
I'm going to allow you, I don't have my resolution, you have.
You seem to have all the details.
Yeah, so, okay, so, so the, so the recommendation, so we're adopting a resolution recommending that the council repeal Tiburon 2015, 2023 housing element, adopt the Tiburon 2023, 2031 housing element, but consider replacing Site H with the, the sites identified in alternative three of the final EIR, comma, and adopt the general plan 2040, and adopt general plan 2040. Okay, and that's the motion.
Okay, I will, I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries three to zero. And this meeting is adjourned. And here you go.
Good work in life. Good work in putting it all together.